Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The City Council just reconvened from closed session, and by vote of 5-0, the City Council authorized the city attorney to initiate litigation in two matters. The names of the defendant and details are not subject to disclosure at this time. Once litigation is filed, the information will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. And I want to adjourn the closed session at 6:15, and we'll call the regular City Council meeting at 6:15 to order on Wednesday, November the 8th. And I'd like to request a city clerk to read the Metro replay schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, November 10th at 1:00 p.m., and Sunday, November 12th at noon. It is being closed captioned; it will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at elkgrovecity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular Notice Agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card. There are the blue cards, which can be found at the back of the room, and provide it to the assistant city clerk prior to consideration of that agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Winn. Councilmember Hugh. Councilmember Suen. Vice Mayor Detrick. And Mayor Lee.
Here.
And next item.
Take us on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
And I see a youth commissioner here. Tyler, would you lead us in the pledge?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tyler. And at the beginning of every regular meeting, the City Council would like to ask the public to join us in a moment of silence.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to dedicate this moment of silence to the folks down in Texas who lost their lives.
I'll second that.
Thank you, councilmember. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you very much. And I have an agenda in front of me.
Move the agenda.
Got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. All right, next item.
We have no closed-session items under Section 3, which takes us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is a presentation of a certificate of recognition to Jeff Ramos for his years of service with the Casunas Community Services District.
All right, is Mr. Ramos here? Come on down. And actually, I'd like to invite the entire City Council because this might be our last chance to see you before you start surfing in Hawaii or something.
He's already quit wearing ties, so that's a good indication right there.
So this is obviously a special occasion in which we are recognizing Jeff Ramos upon the occasion of his retirement. Jeff Ramos is retiring after seven years as general manager. He had capped an extremely exemplary service spanning 23 years with the CSD. Jeff Ramos was instrumental in leading the CSD through the economic downturn, implementing strategies to ensure financial stability with minimum impact to services in the community, while preserving staff jobs and the same high level of service residents expected. Mr. Ramos demonstrated leadership, professionalism, devotion, enthusiasm, humility, providing exemplary model for staff to follow. His dedication to the district, the communities it serves, and its staff is evident and very much appreciated. The City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby recognizes and celebrates Jeff Ramos for his many years of dedicated service to the Casunas Community Services District and the community of Elk Grove, and extend the utmost appreciation and respect to Jeff Ramos on the occasion of his retirement, commending his service, and wishing him the best in all of his future endeavors. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for this recognition. I really appreciate it. You know, you guys, the City Council and staff, you guys have a wonderful general man -- city manager, sorry. City manager, executive team and staff. We at the CSD have so enjoyed working with you guys over these, you know, past years, at least since I've been general manager. It's been a wonderful partnership and collaboration, and I still remember the first time I met Laura when I had just become general manager, and we met for lunch, and we both immediately hit it off and agreed that, you know, we have to work together for the best of the residents. You know, it's not about either agency; it's about the people that we serve. And she certainly has exemplified that in my time as general manager. So I really appreciate all the support that the city has given the CSD and the work that we've done together. I think we've done some great stuff together. You guys have great staff; we have great staff, and together we do great things. And so I'm really excited to see the future for Elk Grove and more collaborations and work to come between the two agencies. So, thank you.
Jeff, you know, Laura, you, myself, all kind of came on board as being involved in representing the city in various components, and I had the pleasure of being on the two-by-twos and working with you and your team and bringing forward a lot of joint ventures where there was areas for cost improvements as well as better service to the residents of Elk Grove. And I think it's just gotten better and better, and obviously with the latest memorandum we have for the Aquatics Center, for you guys to manage that for us. Just, the list goes on and on, and a lot of that's been with your leadership. And we haven't always had, going back a decade, there was a couple bumps in the road with CSD, and you basically, you took over after that, and Laura took over the city's portion as the manager, and the two of you guys together obviously bonded, and together we've just really, really come together for the good of Elk Grove. And I appreciate all you've done and wish you all the best in retirement.
Thank you.
It's absolute pleasure working with you, Jeff. In the short time that I've been on here, obviously, all our residents love their parks and all the activities that you guys host. The concerts at Laguna Town Hall are the ones I always enjoy in particular. But I'm sure I'll see you jogging along Laguna Boulevard, or always high-fiving each other. So I look forward to seeing you in that environment more, and I wish you the best.
Thanks, Darren.
Yeah.
I echo everything that's been said. I think you've done an exemplary job in your position, and it's kind of sad because I think you represent the end of an era. I see Fred Bremmerman in the audience. I go back to Barbara Whackford and Rita and the various police chiefs and Zack and, you know, just a lot of folks that used to be sort of the staple core. You know, a lot of people might not realize this, but Jeff was essentially the CFO of the CSD prior to assuming his current role. So he's served the agency well in varying capacities, and so, like I said, retired and new intent. Get it out of your mind. Go enjoy.
All right, thanks, Pat.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I've said this before, but I know that people that have done such an excellent job in this city that retire can't leave, and they end up coming back to volunteer in some way, and it sounds like you've done an amazing job already, so I hope that we can still count on you to be that super volunteer that we're always looking for, right?
I'll be around.
Actually, well said. I would say those that are retiring now have free time to do a number of other things that we need. I think there's room with VIP, with our police department, you know, it'd be great if you can jump on board as well.
Jeff, see what happens? You get recruited, see? I'm telling you.
But, you know, on a serious note, though, you know, since I've been in public service, I've seen your stellar work, and your crew that's been, you know, behind you all this time has been nothing but stellar. I think the comments from the community have been that we love Elk Grove because the fire department, the police department, and the parks, and those are the three things that we can hang our hat on, and you play an instrumental part in that. So, thank you very much for your service, and best of luck.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, next item.
Take us to item 4.2, which is a presentation on the California Voters' Choice Act and Vote Centers in Sacramento County.
Good evening, councilmembers. I am Jill Lavi. I'm the registrar of voters for Sacramento County, and I'm glad to be here today to present this wonderful new opportunity. Okay. Can you say I can do this, right?
Got Brenda to be here on your wing and help you out.
Nope, I need to go back. We were playing with it before it started, that's why. Okay, this is the Voters' Choice Act. This is for Sacramento County. This is an exciting thing that's going to happen here in this county. So what is it? Well, it started out as Senate Bill 450. It was signed into law, and this bill allows select counties to go to a vote center, mail ballot type election in 2018. Now, when I say select counties, there were 14 counties written into the bill, but only at this time, five are going, and they are Napa, Nevada, San Mateo, Madera, and Sacramento. So we are the largest county going to this. This is a voting model, a different voting model, because you'll see different things that are going to be happening with vote centers, drop-off boxes, and all these exciting things. So, why are we doing it? Well, we look to the past, and we can definitely see that more and more people are voting by mail. It is rising, and on an average, 64 percent countywide vote by mail, but in Elk Grove, 66 percent vote by mail, permanent vote by mail. So you're higher than our county average, which is wonderful. So what does this new program mean to you? Vote by mail. Every registered voter in Sacramento County will now be receiving a ballot in the mail. And it's easy to return, by mail, in a drop-off box, which we'll talk about, at a vote center, or even at our office. If you're not aware, ballots start being processed about 10 days before an election, and that means we check the signatures, we open the envelopes, and we get them ready for counting. And that way, you do have results at 8 o'clock on election night. So what does it mean to you? That your ballot will count. So definitely, we need to do, we're doing a lot of outreach and education to make sure the ballot's clearly signed, clearly marked, and get it in before Election Day. What else does it mean? Vote centers. Some locations throughout the county will be open up to 10 days before the election. And all locations are open the weekend before the election and on Election Day. At a vote center, you can vote at any vote center. It doesn't matter where you live in the county. That's the, I think, the wonderful thing about this, because no longer are you assigned to one location to go to on one day. No longer. You can vote where you work; you can vote where your kids are playing soccer; you can vote where you shop, wherever you want. Vote centers, great services available at vote centers, more than ever at our polling places. At vote centers, you can actually register or update your registration or change your party. In the past, you had a deadline; you had to be registered 15 days before the election. No longer. At every vote center, if you've missed the deadline, or if you say, "I've changed my address," or "I want to change my party before I vote," go to a vote center. We can update your voter registration at any of the vote centers, and you can vote that day. You can drop off your ballot in person; you can vote in person. Ah, let's say the dog ate your ballot; you can get a replacement ballot. You need help with the language? We'll have language assistance at our vote centers. If you need assistance because of a disability, we'll have that at our vote centers, too. Wonderful opportunities. We will have ballot drop-off boxes. We'll have 52 of these throughout the county. And just to give you an idea, last November, we had 71,000 ballots dropped off at dropboxes. We only had 16 at that time. Elk Grove won the contest. You received over 11,581 ballots in the drop-off box that was here. You got 16 percent of all of those ballots. The closest one next to you was, I think, Citrus Heights, and they were like 3,000, 4,000 less than you. So you excelled, and we just love it. Dropboxes, they're going to have 52 of them, or 50, yeah, 52 of them throughout the county, conveniently located. We're checking path of travel; we're checking locations and hours and anything else, and they'll be open for regular business hours through Election Day. So if you don't have a stamp, which we're finding many people don't anymore, drop it in a dropbox. So why did we do this? Well, people aren't going to our polling places anymore. We set up 548 polling places in November, and still, 66, or 64 percent, all voted by mail. There's no, I don't say nobody, not as many people are going to our polling places. So it came to a time where our current voting system needed to be replaced. We're working on that right now. So why buy a system for 548 polling places when I could buy a system for 78 vote centers? Already a huge cost savings, especially since so many are already voting by mail. Another thing with this Voters' Choice Act is for voters with disabilities, we have a remote, accessible vote by mail. So if you're a voter with a disability and you can't make it to a vote center, you have difficulty marking your ballot at home, we'll send you an online ballot that you can mark online and then mail it back to us. This will happen in Sacramento County this year. So let's compare the two, polling place model versus vote center model. If you were voting, you had one location to vote in person; you were assigned to that location and only that location, and if you went anywhere else, you ended up voting a provisional ballot. No longer. There'll be 78 at least, this is all based on registration prior to the election, but based on what we're projecting, 78 locations to vote in person if you wanted to. We had one accessible voting machine at each polling place; we will have at least three at all our vote centers. You had 13 hours to vote that one day. Now, a day at one vote center that's open for up to 11 days, you're going to have 93 hours at each one. We had five poll workers at each polling place. Now we're going to have maybe eight, depending on the location and how many. And they will be trained with a little more training. When we're looking for close to 3,000 people to work on one day, sometimes the test is, "Are you breathing?" And sometimes, now we can have just a little bit more training, and they can work more than one day. So it won't be like, "Oh, I haven't done this in two years." No, they can do, "I haven't done this since yesterday. This is great." Ballot drop-off locations, last time we, in November, we had 16; now we will have 52. So, by law, because of the registration, we have to have 16 locations open for up to 11 days. Vote centers after that, then we add more for the last four days, which is the weekend before, 70, for a total of 78. And the ballot drop-off boxes are opened as soon as you get your ballot, which is 29 days or 28 days before the election. Where are we going to put these vote centers? Well, the bill is very definite in the criteria. We had to have a close-to-public transportation, communities with vote by mail, low vote by mail usage, population centers, accessible parking, low rates of vehicle ownership. So we put all of that criteria, and we made it into a map, and the higher, the darker pink area is where we find that the most need is. Now, that doesn't mean that we're not going to put them everywhere, but this is what we can start looking at, of where the need is, and definitely, there's going to be the vote centers throughout the entire county. We're looking for community input for locations; we're looking for community input to assist us. We have established what we call a LAC, which is a Language Advisory, Accessory, Language Accessible Advisory Board Committee, and a VAC, Voter Accessible Advisory Committee, to help us with these locations. Those committees are up and running now. We actually came to your DAC committee, your Disability Advisory Committee, and made a presentation there, and many of them have joined us on the countywide to help us make sure we meet the needs of all the people. So, now, you can vote how you want, when you want, and where you want. It is your choice. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Well, I like the improvements, but it would be nice to see, what is the feasibility in the future that there would be, able to vote from home, just from your computer with a designated PIN number, the way you do with banking or filing with IRS or...
They've looked at that. They're not quite comfortable with it, with all the security issues that have been broadcast throughout the country. And this first step of having voters, or even overseas voters, vote by us sending them a ballot, online ballot, that they mark, and then they mail back after it's voted. This is a huge step. This is just, because it just started this year. So this will be very beneficial, so I think it's the first step, but not quite to the point where you can email your voted ballot back to us yet.
Well, not even email. I'm talking about where you, it's actually a secured site that you go onto and vote. Is there any cities or states in the country that are doing that?
No. To my knowledge, no. Not yet.
Okay. We could be leaders.
We could. We're, actually, we are leaders right now. We are, like I say, in California, we're one of the leaders here.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions? No? No questions?
Thank you very much, and thank you for your participation, because it's been wonderful having you as a partner for many years, using your center for a vote, polling place, and as a drop-off box. So thank you.
I do have a quick question, actually, now that I think about it. Absentees, do they still come out the same time, one month before?
Well, there won't be an absentee per se, because everybody gets a ballot, so everybody has it, right? As soon as, we can send them out as soon as 29 days before the election.
I see. Wow, yeah.
And definitely want to thank you for all the work, because I know what a, that's a huge job, huge undertaking in a short period of time. It looks like at least this will give you a little expansion on the time to process everything.
It will, because as soon as the ballots come back in, we can, you know, hopefully get them back sooner so we can actually, you know, check them, you know, get them verified and ready to go. So this is, to me, it's very exciting to see this huge change, and I'm glad to be part of it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
All right, next item.
Take us to Section 5, our General Public Comment.
Amr Shigal is our first speaker. Mr. Shigal, come on up.
Good evening, council. I have come today to thank you regarding your leadership in setting up the forums on race over the past few weeks. There are other times where I come with a demand or a critique, and I just thought those forums were really good conversation, things that needed to happen in Elk Grove. And I think there was some growth there, some people that maybe didn't know that these issues were pervasive, and we got to hear some really courageous testimony, particularly from the African-American community. So I appreciate the growth, and I also want to acknowledge that there was even some growth from council. You know, I think a month or two ago, from the individual conversations and the statements here, I think there was a consensus, and myself included, that the problem was not as bad as we learned it was. And to your credit, you didn't let that be your epitaph. You heard new facts, and you said, "Let's get in front of this; let's do this, these forums," and you involved yourself, you listened, and you asked for solutions. So I want to thank you for that. It's my understanding now that the facilitators will give you a report in a few weeks, and hopefully then either there'll be a committee process, or y'all will put on the agenda, maybe a special meeting, where we'll talk about the solutions. I think we all agree that where we are right now, even with our PR campaign, is probably not good enough, and we need to do more. So I look forward to working on sort of this reasonable civic policy solutions that we need. Second topic, a number of weeks ago, maybe more than a month, we came to you regarding setting up a legal fund for DACA recipients. I think the council was receptive and gave direction to staff. It's my understanding that today we might hear a report on that, so I look forward to, you know, hearing that there's going to be a swift action, because I think there's a lot of DACA recipients that are out there waiting to get some of those funds or some of that assistance. Thank you all. Take care.
All right, thank you. And Dineshah, did I pronounce it right this time?
Third time's a charm.
I know. Thank you.
You weren't here; I got it right the first time, though.
I know. You're the high achiever.
I apologize, I'm sick, and my voice is weird, but I just wanted to come to the council today and echo some of the statements Amr made. I really, I attended all three of the town halls, and I thought they were exceptional, wonderful opportunities to learn and share and grow, and I was really encouraged by the outpouring of support from the council and from the community, and I really feel like a lot of people did get a lot out of it. I'm really looking forward to the ALF report. I think that will identify some additional steps that we can take as a community, and I hope that we do make efforts to continue the conversation and bring it into the areas where we might find it will be most effective and reach a different demographic than the people that would actually come out to the meetings that we had on Monday nights, maybe people that work, you know, so, weekend activity, or in the churches, or schools, something like that. But I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm looking forward to, you know, the follow-up and continuing more of the conversation and growing as a community. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. Brad Westmoreland. Following Brad is David Lima.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Brad Westmoreland, and I'd like to start also by echoing the previous speakers. I want to commend this body for the work that it has done in the wake of these racially charged occurrences that have happened over the past few months. My wife and I are fairly new to Elk Grove, and we've been really impressed by the way that the community's been able to come together on this issue. I think there has been a lot of growth that has occurred, so I think you should be commended for that. My wife and I had a chance to attend one of these forums, and, you know, we listened to some of these stories that people had, people who were discriminated against, people who experienced prejudice and harassment, and they were really heart-wrenching stories to hear. So it's important for leaders such as yourselves and for us as a larger community to do whatever we can to kind of stamp out this discrimination and harassment wherever we see it. And it's in that spirit that I'm here tonight, because there is another community within our community that is in need of our attention. I'm speaking about our friends, our neighbors, our family, who are living with disabilities. U.S. Congress may soon be voting on a bill that will significantly weaken the protections of the Americans with Disabilities Act. I'm naming this bill as H.R. 620, the ADA Education and Reform Act, and it is a bill that will make it more difficult for persons with disabilities to vindicate the hard-fought rights that they've gained under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Supporters of this bill claim that it will help put an end to predatory lawsuits, which have become a headache for many businesses in especially the state of California. But actually, the ADA is not the driving force behind these kind of predatory lawsuits. It's a, the reason we're seeing a lot of these predatory lawsuits has to be more of a state law. So it is the opinion of a lot of people that state legislation is the more appropriate venue to deal with this kind of thing. Weakening the ADA in order to address an issue that is almost unique to California and a handful of other states is a lot like amputating a limb in order to deal with a wart. It's a very dramatic overreach. So we need to ask ourselves if putting an end to a handful of bad actors in the state of California is worth depriving disabled persons across the country of their civil rights. I bring this to your attention because I know it's an issue that's important to your constituents, to people all across the country, and I have some more information that I can give to the clerk if you'd like to learn more.
Yes, thank you. If you could do that, yeah. David Lima?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I am David Lima, the chairman of the Linda Mae May and Lima Foundation, a nonprofit corporation here in Elk Grove, with a primary mission here in Elk Grove, with the primary mission of capturing the oral histories of the greater Elk Grove area. We do this by interviewing local folks, together and preserve local stories. With these recordings, we then produce audio casts, which are from three to 10 minutes in length, and relate a particular story or aspect of local history. These audio casts will be published throughout the year on our website. Tonight, I'd like to thank the Council for approving our request for a grant to help fund this activity, with particular thanks to Vice Mayor Detrick, who early on offered us some very welcome and sage advice on how to approach our mission. We're in the final throes of contracting and paperwork to put the grant into effect, and with a backlog of work, we'll be using the funds in a very, very effective way. One of our objectives over the next year is to develop more venues and outlets for these audio casts beyond our website. One idea is to play short version audio casts at council meetings as a way to, for the broader community, to better learn and appreciate more about our history. We have submitted to the city several examples of these shortened audio casts for consideration, including, in appreciation of Veterans Day, an audio cast which tells the story of a local veteran. Although this veteran audio cast is in the form of a narration versus our usual method of local people telling their stories in their own words and in their own voices, this audio cast can demonstrate what might be possible to repeat with other audio casts at council meetings. I would ask that, when convenient for each of you, please take a few minutes to listen to one of these audio casts. Again, thank you for your support for our foundation request or grant request, and thanks for considering this idea. Thank you.
David, do you have one prepared?
I'd have to refer to the clerk.
Mr. Lima did submit one of the audio files, and within the guidelines of our policy, we do have it available. It's at the discretion of the City Council. If you'd like to hear it, it's about 3 minutes and 44 seconds, I believe.
I did preview it, and, you know, it seems to be appropriate, being that this weekend is very special. So if the Council is okay with it, I'd like to go ahead and broadcast it, yeah.
While you're getting ready to boot that up, Laura, is there a way we could also provide that as a link on our website so that folks that happen to come on there that are just searching for things about Elk Grove, that that's another chapter with the history of Elk Grove?
Yes, we could certainly do that.
Yeah, that would be terrific, yeah.
Discover the story of one Elk Grove area veteran. It is the story of Charles E. Walther, a veteran of World War I. Charles was born in Bruceville, Franklin Township, in July 1890. His father, Charles F. Walther, was the postmaster, owned and operated the blacksmith shop, and at one time served as the master of the Masonic Lodge in Elk Grove. Charles, the younger, was an accomplished musician, a violinist, studying and teaching music at the College of the Pacific, then located in San Jose. He could have chosen military service in the Army Band, but instead, as he said, he, quote, "would shoulder the musket." He shipped out of New York for Europe on June 28, 1918, on the SS Lapland. Not too long after arriving in France, he was burned by mustard gas and was in the hospital at Corman when the building was bombed, wounding him afresh. On September 26, 1918, with many unhealed wounds, he returned to the front to become part of Pershing's big push. Less than 100 days after arriving in Europe, and a mere six weeks before the armistice, Charles was killed in battle in France on October 1, 1918. He was buried in the Muse Argonne American Cemetery. But three years later, after a very determined effort by his father, his body was returned from France. Services were held at the Federated Church of Elk Grove, followed by graveside services with full military honors and rifle salute by the American Legion and the War Mothers Organization. On October 30, 1921, Charles was reinterred in the family plot in the Elk Grove Cemetery. A few years before, as he left to study music in San Jose, his sister Pearl gave him a Bible. In it, she wrote, "My sweetheart brother, keep this little book with you as a symbol of my love and prayers for you. Love to you, dear Pearl." Charles carried that Bible with him, and as he crossed the fields of France, he plucked wildflower blossoms and pressed them between its pages. Sometime after Charles was reinterred here in Elk Grove, his father wrote this passage in that little book. Private Charles E. Walther, killed in action October 1, 1918, in the Argonne, France, while fighting for the Stars and Stripes. "May this testament be kept sacred through the future generations," is the wish of his father. He wrote us from the battlefront that war would not brutalize him, that he could not resist plucking the beautiful flowers, and these, in this book, are as he placed them. "Some were plucked," he said, "when the bullets were whizzing past him." He was not afraid of death. He was twice wounded before he received his mortal wounds. He was found on the battlefield with machine gun bullets through the upper chest, and he died with this precious book in his left hand.
It's beautiful.
Thank you. And there are many, many stories like this that we've been fortunate enough to capture already, and will continue to do so as time moves forward.
David, do you have, are they all audio only, or some, do you have some with photos or video?
All audio. Our preference by design is audio. If we were to do a Ken Burns sort of thing, where you have video and audio with it, you tend to lead the participant and not let their mind absorb and their imagination absorb the story that is being told. And so we chose audio purposefully to limit that. Now, there are records that when we turn this package over to the Historical Society for archival and in perpetuity, which is our intent, any other collateral information that we have gathered, photos or other documentary evidence, will be turned over with them as well. So that will be in the possession of the Historical Society, all of this eventually. But the ambition that we have is really to convey a story, a series of stories, in short snippets. It doesn't take a lot of time, so that younger people can appreciate, newer folks to the area can appreciate the history that's here. Not that this is unique, there's probably 100,000 stories just like Charles Walther's, but this is our story, this is our community. And so we're focused on the greater Elk Grove area and bringing some of those stories to light and greater visibility. And one of the ideas is to suggest that perhaps this body could play one of these, and we could provide to the city, to the city clerk, an inventory of 20 or so of these, and periodically or every meeting, the City Council could choose to pick one and play it, and then we would continue to replenish that supply so that there's always a ready flow of information to share.
David, I think you mentioned that you were able to condense this down to three minutes?
Yes.
What are the full-length ones typically, about 10, you said?
About 10. They run from eight to 12. The intent is everyone has iPhones, and everybody uses this technology today, and if you keep a story at 10 minutes or less, the attention is kept, particularly with the youth today, it's captivating. And again, with just an audio, their imaginations, the facts that they're absorbing in the imagination seems to have a greater impact than leading them through with pictures and facts and figures and remembering things. But yes, so 10 minutes is our target, and they run from eight to 12, depends on, and those are produced out of interviews that may be as long as two hours.
So what are you proposing to the one, the full-length versions once to the city?
No, I think we could, we have supplied others as well, that there's six or seven others that we've already produced as examples that, so we'll take the two hours, and out of that, we'll produce maybe six, five or six 10-minute audio casts, and then from there, we can take those and edit them down succinctly like this, do about a three-minute audio presentation.
Couldn't we have a three-minute teaser that perhaps maybe is part of City Council at the beginning, but the remainder of it could be linked to a site somewhere?
Correct, yes. And so the full-length, the 10-minute or whatever versions, we will post on our website, and so those will be readily available. And we could readily make that available for the city to post on their website. We don't own that, that's not our proprietary information. And again, it's intended to be turned over for public access through the Historical Societies or any other arrangement that we may have.
This is my suggestion to avoid talking about an item that's not on the agenda.
Right.
Why don't I ask for staff to bring this back, if I can get the consensus of the Council, to discuss whether we want to make it a part of the City Council meeting or have a venue to share this?
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
In the meantime, David, I just want to thank you for the work that you're doing, and let you know that I was watching the faces of some of the young folks in the audience tonight, and what you're doing is affecting them. I mean, the realization that somebody from Elk Grove went to serve in World War I, not once, but twice, was first buried in France and is now buried here.
Exactly.
And the other thing that I'd like to end with today is that Morgan Freeman ought to be checking his rearview mirror, because you have a voice perfectly suited for narration.
I totally agree.
Oh, my goodness. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
So this will come back, and then once it comes back, we can discuss it further.
We'll be prepared to help.
All right.
Thanks, David.
Our last speaker is Randy Becker.
While you guys are done going all around the world in the United States, and we got all five of you, I want to thank you for that. That was very moving. As part of you not being here last week, to kind of follow up of what I said last week, or two weeks ago, and this is a prime example. You know, Elk Grove was a town. You know, when I was these kids' age, I've been in this town for 42 years, like a couple of you. We were pretty young then. And it was country. It really was. And to have a city now, you know, I look back and I wish my sons were able to be raised how I was. But that's the future, this is the present, not the past. And that story about World War I makes me think about my great-grandfather that served in World War I. He did come home alive, but still, he served. And we take for granted everything that we have, and we tussle and argue over insignificant things comparably, if you really want to get down to it. And so, you know, I just wanted to bring to the Council some of the past that we've lived with, and leave you with a different idea of how things used to be. But along with that, I wanted, I read something in the Elk Grove Citizen today that created our cityhood part of it. And there was two reasons, one of the two reasons we became cityhood. One was to have a voice away from the county board of supervisors, because we were getting inundated with housing developments with one vote. And that's why there's a stop sign, so to speak, when people want to talk about changing district, changing how we vote, changing how you people vote, because there's still a bad taste in our mouth about how we were dealt with. That doesn't mean there shouldn't be changes, just means that's why there's some sense of a stop sign. And for those that want to move forward with that, there's a petition or a way of petitioning through the voting process to see if there, as Mr. Hoom said the last meeting, is if there's any traction. I don't know which way to go on that issue, to be quite honest. I've watched civics since the 90s, so I see the downside in it, where it's not a good thing. So just because it looks good doesn't mean it's so. We just need to look into it. The last thing is, and I may run over just a little bit, if you will. The numbers of our police force per capita is down according to a number of findings. And I don't know if that's so, I haven't dived into it, but if it is, one of the reasons we became a city is because we wanted a strong police force, because we weren't getting from the county what we were paying for. And if those numbers need to increase, we need to do it quickly, not wait for a year, two years, three years down the road. Along with that, along with what Mr. Shigal said about the meeting, we have an opportunity to bring some of the outside folks in that feel wronged correctly, and find out if they got some ideas, people. We all know people. Job opens up, hey, I got a job, you interested? I know policing's different. I do know that. But there's no reason why we can't reach out to some of the civic leaders, some of the business leaders, some of the people that call Elk Grove their home and want to make it better, and make a change, and bring people in that are going to want to be here, and also serve the public, all the public, not just a few of the public. Not to say our police force does that, but some think that they have been wronged, and this is a chance to help mend those fences. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, let's move on to the next item.
That'll take us to Section 6, our general administration information.
Thank you, mayor and council members. First, to let you know that there is a joint meeting between the CSDT and Action Committee and the Cities Youth Commission to talk about what their ideal community might look like during a teen town hall forum. It'll be held tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Wafford Community Complex. Community service credits are available to those teens that participate. Also, the Police Department will host an informational meeting tomorrow night to explore what is involved in becoming a community service officer or a police officer. This informational meeting starts at 6 o'clock tomorrow night in Council Chambers, and we ask that you RSVP through the Police Department. Also, it is, this coming Saturday is Veterans Day, and Elk Grove American Legion, Post 233, and community volunteers will continue the tradition of honoring those who have selflessly served our nation during Elk Grove 16th Annual Veterans Day Parade. The ceremonies begin at 10 o'clock Saturday morning at the Elk Grove Shopping Center located at 9108 Elk Grove Florin Road. Beginning at 11, the parade will proceed south on Elk Grove Florin Road to Elk Grove Regional Park. To accommodate the event, road closures and detours will be set up between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m., and again, there'll be more details available on the city's website. Also, we will be hosting a third public open house to discuss the multimodal facility feasibility study. This open house will be held on Thursday, November 16, at 7:00 at the Franklin High School Cafeteria at 6400 White Light Parkway. This open house will focus on potential multimodal facility sites located immediately adjacent to the Union Pacific Railroad tracks on the west side of the city along the Sacramento Subdivision Rail Corridor. Approximately 9,700 notification postcards were mailed to properties located within 1,000 feet of the rail corridor, in addition to event listings on the city's Facebook and Nextdoor platforms, and we've also distributed a press release. Information about this project is available on the city's website. Elk Grove's Thanksgiving morning tradition has a new name and a new beneficiary. The Gobble Wobble Run preserves the traditional run but now benefits chicks in crisis. The city will sponsor the event and release road closures and detour information later this month. Race registration and event details are available at the website, eggobblewobble.com. The Elk Grove, I mean, the Old Town Elk Grove Foundation will host the 30th Annual Dickens Street Fair on Saturday, November 25, in Old Town Elk Grove. Festivities will include street and stage performers, live music, a life-size snow globe, free pictures with Santa, kids' crafts, vendors' food, and breakfast with Santa. Street fair festivities will run from 9:00 to 5:00. At 6:00 p.m., the Parade of Lights will travel from Elk Grove Florin Road to Walnut Avenue and conclude with the holiday tree lighting ceremony. For details, including breakfast reservations and parade registration, please visit the dickensstreetfair.com site. As was alluded to during public comment, the third and three town hall sessions discussing race relations was held Monday night. The city will receive a report from the American Leadership Forum that includes the recommendations coming from those sessions in the next few weeks. from those sessions in the next few weeks. Residents that wish to continue the conversation are encouraged to participate in the online discussion available through Open City Hall by visiting the city's website. Moving to the Standing Citywide Initiatives update with the General Plan Update, the next meeting on the Triangle area will be November the 14th at 6:00 here in Council Chambers. With regard to the Civic Center Public Art, based on recommendations from the city's Public Art Review Committee comprised of members of the city's Arts Commission and staff, council approved six of the eight art proposals at its meeting of October the 25th. City staff will solicit new proposals for the additional two art pieces. Then, for on page three of the Standing Citywide Initiatives update, there is an update regarding the animal shelter. The Committee for the Arts has reviewed the project and developed recommendations for public art. These recommendations were approved by city council at its meeting of October 25th. Staff is in the process of preparing a request for proposal for the approved art recommendation. The project is on schedule with construction starting in the spring of 2018 and completion before June of 2019. With that, that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, any questions?
Laura, on the career in law enforcement for tomorrow night, what additional public outreach have we done? Have we contacted the NAACP and some of the other people that have come and spoke before us about making sure that we're touching specific groups?
Brian, you want to take that?
Sure. With respect to the NAACP and other groups specifically, I'm not sure which we've contacted, but our practice has been to contact all of those groups. My understanding is that it's almost full for Thursday evening, tomorrow evening's presentation, and if need be, we'll do additional, you know, deliveries of that presentation.
Could you circle back with me on that we did contact, personally contact them? Because I know that one of the comments was that a lot of times, they don't know about these things to get out to their community.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I would go one step further, Chief. If, you know, a while back, we looked at the numbers, and there were some certain groups that weren't fully represented here at the department. I would imagine that you would notify those particular groups as well, particularly like the Asian community, different organizations that are within the city limits?
We absolutely would. I mean, I don't want to steal the show here, but I can say as briefly as I can, we connect regularly through the Links to Law Enforcement Program and the Asian Resources with that, with the Asian Pacific Islander cohort through the urban, we connect with the African-American community through the Sacramento Urban League, through the, to the Hispanic community through La Familia, and frankly, any other means or mechanism that we can utilize.
Yeah. In fact, you know, it certainly would be helpful if you shared that list with me or some of the council members, because you never know when you're going to get the question, whether we actually made contact or not. It's good to actually point to one person and say, yeah, our department did, so.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I can speak a little bit to that. And Chief, you are absolutely right. I could say that I received the flyer, and since we started the Links to Law Enforcement program, and we extended the cohort to the African-American community with La, with the Sacramento Urban League, and then also La Familia for the Latino community, and then we pulled in all the other jurisdictions. And so, the facilitators actually are the captains and the lieutenants and the sergeants. And it's been very well received by the community. And so, those flyers were shared to me, and I did share them with my partnering organizations like Urban League, La Familia, Sacramento Employment Training Agency. So it did get distributed to the vast community as well. Whether or not people opened them or they took a look at it and they realized what it is, I mean, if you have a full room and possibly if there's a need for more, then we can certainly, you know, assist in getting those flyers out. I did also see it on social media as well, too. So your team did get it to us.
Councilmember, for those people in the audience and that are watching, could maybe you explain why you would have been, received those in your professional life, separate from your council member position?
Oh, sure. I run an organization. I'm the executive director of a nonprofit organization that is a workforce development and economic development organization. And one of the areas in which we saw that was a need to outreach to our minority community was law enforcement. And so, we pulled together our sister agencies, La Familia and Sacramento Urban League, in assisting us with this, because that was their pull, that was their outreach. And then we pulled in the Elk Grove Police Department, the Sacramento Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, CHP, all of the jurisdictions. And it has definitely been very successful, to the point where I had testified at assembly hearings, Senate hearings as well, too, about the program, and had been asked to even go to DC to talk about how great this program is. And we wouldn't be able to do it without the assistance of our partnering organizations, but definitely our law enforcement organizations as well. And the fact that they see the need and the value behind it has really been good. So I think we're looking at starting the next cohort here, the beginning of 2018. And the organizations all are willing to continue this program and possibly even branching out to our Slavic community, as well as our Middle Eastern communities as well, too.
Okay, great. Any other questions? No? All right.
I have one.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Laura, I'll just use this, the entree from the update on the multimodal station hearing that'll happen, or the forum that'll happen next Thursday, as an opportunity, so I don't forget to bring it up under Council Comments. But I had a meeting with the President and Vice President of Train Riders Association of California today. They're very interested in a multimodal station, but they recognize, like I do, that the future success of that station hinges as much on the Altamont Commuter Express as it does on the San Joaquin's. And so, I would like maybe for Mike, I could bird dog this information myself, but I'd like to know what the, what the, how much would it cost to get on board with ACE and have that service run to Elk Grove in the future as opposed to using the San Joaquin's? For those of you that don't know, they're funded differently. ACE is an intercity rail program versus the San Joaquin's is an Amtrak run program. So, Mike, do you think you could track down that information for me? Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next item.
Take us to Section 7, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
Okay. Vice Mayor Detrick, you ready?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, sir.
To follow up on Brad's comments, Kara, can we have Pete, our federal lobbyist, look into that and work with us, with our team? And obviously, John, it's probably something you're going to have to kind of pipe in on, because I'd like to hear back on that, because obviously, protection of our disabled members of our community is one of our top priorities. I want to make sure. And Brad, thank you for bringing that forward tonight. That's the first I've heard about it, and I'm not sure if anybody else has. Another area of our community that the entire council supports is the Elk Grove Food Bank. And they've got an upcoming, actually, it's currently going on, it's a turkey drive. It started this past Monday and goes through November 17th, and they're looking for donations of turkeys and all the fixings that can be delivered directly to the food bank. Or, for those who would prefer to do a monetary option, those donations can be made online. And for the donation hours and donation links for monetary donations, it's www.eklowfoodbank.org. I already had on my notes here to support Dave Lemus' proposal, so look forward to that coming back. As another future agenda item, I've had a couple different existing business owners contact me over the past couple months, and I forwarded on those messages to our executive team to look into. And there's a big concern with the high cost to expand existing operations. And I'd like to see if I could get the consensus from the council to bring that back and differentiate between an existing business and maybe what we charge for our impact fees versus what the current method is. Because I think there may be something that we should look at where we're not charging existing businesses that want to expand at the same location, the full ante of what it costs. I think it kind of discourages them to expand. So I'd like to see if we could bring that back for a discussion, if I have consensus from everybody.
I support that.
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
We have consensus.
I had an opportunity to, kind of a fun thing, to be video interviewed by the sixth graders at Florence Markoffer Elementary for their weekly news spot, which ties back into my position on the Sacramento Central Cable Commission. And that's put them in contact with Jim Bentley and some of the other players here, because it's a fairly new program at their school, and it's great to see the expansion and the interest that the kids have. And they're using, it's a whole new technique of, this teacher uses a lot of technology to teach rather than books, which is kind of an interesting concept. And as I see a principal in the audience, he's probably saying, oh, my God, what are they doing now? So one of my favorite events, one's that on Monday night was the Citizen of the Year for Pancho Sanchez. And he's got to be one of the most humble gentlemen that I've ever met. And anybody who's been around Rotary, there's a, one of their famous mottos is service above self. And Pancho exemplifies that. Was it the inaugural Elk Grove Hall of Fame? It was a fantastic event, recognizing the accomplishments of Mariel Sukamoto's, Stephanie Lopez Cox, Sean Sullivan, Roy Herberger, and Bill Cartwright, which, you know, they're, they've kind of become ambassadors either around the state, the nation, or around the world. So it's great to have great representation. And it was, again, I was very, very touched by every one of them as a speaker and the humility that they all had for the phenomenal accomplishments they've all made. And I was joined with the mayor, Councilmember Wen, and Councilman Zoom were all there. So I know they're going to probably have some comments as well. And then I did attend the first implicit bias meeting. It was very well-attended and very informative, and look forward to some of the reports that come out. And I'd like to thank both Darren and Pat for you guys taking the leadership on that, because obviously, very, very important, and more to follow. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Councilman Zoom.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Attended the Library Authority Meeting since we last met, our Land Use and Natural Resources Committee meeting for Shake Og. We had a meeting of our American Leadership Forum. They supported the My Sister's House run in Land Park, an organization that supports domestic violence, women that have been subject to domestic violence and sexual assault. Attended with the mayor, the Elk Grove Chinese Association 20th Anniversary Dinner. And then, as Vice Mayor mentioned, had the opportunity with our, most of our council members, to attend the Hall of Fame, where we recognized residents part of Elk Grove and furthering our civic pride in the community. Just wanted to add that Terry Wolf was also, he wasn't there physically, but we recognized him as well. And then finally, as mentioned earlier, we had the third of our town halls and the second of our implicit bias training. I want to thank my partner in crime, Councilman Hume, for our committee work, and then the rest of the council for supporting this effort. We did a fantastic job as a community, as organizations that included not just the city but the CSD and the members of the school district that were there as well, and residents in the community that, to build a container, start to build a container of trust where we can have meaningful dialogue. It started off with sharing experiences that people had gone to, gone through, and those were really difficult to hear. But then it left, I felt, in a hopeful way. So I don't want that to stop. And I hope that we can find a way for us to continue to build that container, to bring others into the fold, to understand what implicit bias is and how we can de-bias, you know, work on de-biasing through techniques that we learned there. And then, as far as an agenda item, so with the Alf Report, the American Leadership Forum Report that's being generated, I wanted to get the support of the council to put that on an agenda item where we could discuss, you know, direction in terms of how we might host those further conversations, or maybe let the Multicultural Committee take charge of it as an organization that wanted to extend their programs or purview in this subject matter, that kind of thing. And then, obviously, put the report on the website as well for folks to see. So is the council supportive of doing that?
I'll support that.
Sure.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just have to kind of chuckle, because every time I hear de-biasing, I think of that thing you do with the monitor where it goes like this real quick to reset itself. And it's actually not a bad analogy, if you think about it. It's making the picture clear in your own mind. So I attended the Capital Southeast Connector Joint Powers Authority last Friday. Not a lot of new business, but it was a very heavy executive director's report. And one of the primary items that was reported on is the potential beginning of right-of-way acquisition for the B2 segment, which is the segment that runs from Moser to Bradshaw. We're potentially going to change some of the design of that. There's a frontage road that might be eliminated, because it would be a throwaway improvement that would not have a long shelf life. And so, therefore, if we can make it work without it, we'll try and save those dollars, which would also reduce the amount of take required to be purchased from those property owners. Had an audit committee meeting with the vice mayor, where we heard a presentation on a new potential investment strategy that we directed staff to move forward on expanding the amount of investment that we put into local banks. Local being defined as either having a branch in Elk Grove or within the FDIC geographic category of the Sacramento region or the San Joaquin FDIC. And essentially, what it'd do is it'd act like sort of a venture capital fund, where we would invest our money into this guaranteed repository. In exchange for that, they would assure us we would get the same rate of return that we would currently get if we had it with the local agency investment fund, that's a state-run program. But then they will also make available a certain percentage of those funds to loans to Elk Grove businesses, so that the money that is our money that we're investing with them, they make available to businesses to put right back into our community. So I think it's, it has a lot of promise. Brad is appropriately conservative about putting any of the city's funds even moderately at risk from simply availability standpoint. But I think we reached a level of compromise that at least lets us dip our toe into the pool and feel the water and see if we can expand the program as we go forward. So excited about that. Councilmember Wen and I had an ad hoc diversity meeting wherein we reviewed the submitted proposals based off of the RFP that went out for the diversity inclusion audit and also diversity inclusion strategy, and then Phase Two would be training. We reviewed those with members of the community that were, and staff that was assigned to review those proposals. Surprisingly, or maybe not surprisingly, everybody ranked them in almost the exact same way. And so, we had a clear favorite, not only from the, we thought the qualifications and what they were offering and what they're bringing to the table, but also a reasonable cost standpoint. And so, I don't know the status of that, but Kara's been in negotiations with that firm to discuss moving forward with a potential July delivery date of something tangible back to council. I did attend the, I won't say final, but I'll say most recent of our implicit bias training diversity forums at the Pavilion. It didn't have quite the, I was unfortunately not able to attend the middle of the series, but didn't have quite the attendance that the first one did. But I think the people there were engaged, as was mentioned by several of the speakers. I look forward to the report that comes back from the Alf folks. And I'd like to thank particularly Kara Reddick, Carrie Byerline, Carolyn Hill, and Kristin Nelson for all of their work that they did in helping out and staffing the events and making everything go smoothly. A lot of times, staff is just expected to perform their duties because that's what they're being paid for. They think this is above and beyond. And so I just wanted to call that out.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And then finally, as was mentioned, met with And then finally, as was mentioned, met with members of the Train Riders Association of California, the President, Vice President, who are very interested in how we prioritize our transportation dollars and particularly in looking at how we can open up the valley to the South Bay via heavy rail over the Altamont Corridor. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Nguyen.
Thank you, sir. I won't repeat some of the events that I attended with our councilmembers here, but I will talk a little bit about the implicit bias. I attended all three of them and as Ms. Vanessa was saying earlier, they were exceptional. And I want to thank her for attending all three of them as well as Orlando Fuentes, who I see is sitting out there. And I made a new friend, Ms. Lorraine, who's also in our audience today. I, you know, after we met at the very first community meeting, I started seeing her everywhere else. So, you know, I'm going to miss not seeing you on Mondays at these meetings. And lastly, I want to say that I've worked with Stephanie Bray from United Way, Bill Kennedy, Nancy Lee, Cassandra Pye, Jim Tabucci, and Ranganay in the community for many years. And it was so wonderful to see them all come together and pull our community to have these hard discussions. And I thought they did it so well and so professional. And I, you know, they're not here tonight, but I do want to thank them because it's a lot of work to pull community, a community together to discuss these issues. And I do want to thank our councilmembers, Soon and Hume, for also putting this together because when you pull community, town hall meetings together like this, it's a lot of work. So I do want to recognize that. I attended the Sacramento Public Library Authority Meeting. And one thing I want to point out is that there was a group of young people that were talking about reaching out to the refugee community in the Arden Arcade area. There is that huge population and how there was such a large amount of our refugee communities that were coming to the library and utilizing it. And I happen to know that our refugee resettlement agencies are looking to resettle some of the next flood of refugees into our city here. And I think I mentioned that at the last council meeting. And so I did request that when that does happen that we do something similar to that for our residents here in our city as well, too. I attended the Council of American Islamic Relations Dinner, which was well-attended. Over a thousand community members were there. I also had the opportunity to judge the Second Annual California North State Educational Health Symposium posters. I also am attending tomorrow. It's a conference that has been conducted in the East Coast. It's called Strong Youth, Strong Communities. Over 500 young people across our region have signed up for this event. And this is, this is one where our NFL Hall of Famers, Darryl Green and Anthony Munoz, are going to come and share their real-life experiences and their struggles and how they've made it. And this gives the opportunity for our young people, as we've discussed in the last three town hall meetings, that, you know, racism starts at home and it starts with young people. And so this is going to give the opportunity for our young people to also share how to build stronger communities. So I'm looking forward to being at that event tomorrow, which starts at 3:00 at the Sacramento Convention Center and will end at a Kings game. So these youth are going to be there from 3:00 to 3:00 to 10:00. And I think Ms. Lorraine's going to be there as well, too. Am I correct? Lastly, I've been appointed to the League of California Cities API Caucus Taxation and Revenue Committee. And that's all I have.
Excellent.
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat any of the events that I've attended with the other councilmembers. The only thing I wanted to add is I did have a chance to participate with the East and West Medical School Conference. And what is worthy of highlighting is they are really breaking ground on something that's pretty unique in the medical field, bridging a gap between East and West medicine. And I just thought it was a tremendous show being out there and seeing the number of folks that came from the medical profession. The other thing is sanitation meeting was canceled this morning. And as you all know, I went to Israel on a trip to, to have a conversation on autonomous vehicles and also solar energy. I was able to make a number of contacts that went on the trip as well. But that is going to warrant a, probably a deeper discussion with city leadership, administration. So I'll hit you up, Laura, ask you how to approach that. The other item worth noting as well is had the opportunity to go to the Syrian border and had an opportunity to visit some of the refugees that came out of Syria who are being treated by Israeli medical professionals in Israel. Had a conversation with them and certainly it was very insightful. But like I always say, whenever there's trouble, America is always there to receive the refugees. So I would expect along the conversation, the comment that you made, I wouldn't be surprised if more of these refugees we see pop up in Sacramento. That is all. And next item.
Take us to Section 8, Consent Calendar Items.
Okay. Want to open to public comment, seeing that no speakers are signed up to speak. Want to close public comment, counsel deliberation and direction.
Move consent.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstention. All right. Next item.
This evening, we have no public hearings under Section 9, which will take us to Section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is receive a report and provide direction on participation in the Sacramento Fuel Network or other similar program.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask to be excused because I've been a part of this fuel network from the very beginning and there's a possibility that the organization that I represent may have a financial gain when funding is discussed.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Christopher Dorgan with the City Manager's Office, be doing the presentation this evening. As we begin, I do want to draw your attention to the green sheet that's on your dais this evening. Unfortunately, we identified that a portion of the staff report was removed prior to the printing last week. Do apologize for that. So there's a little bit of additional information in there that will be helpful, including Table 3. All of that will be included in the presentation this evening. So what is the Fuel Network? It is the Family Unity Education and Legal Network. It's a Sacramento region-wide organization comprised of various community assistance organizations and legal assistance groups, including the George Immigration Clinic, UC Davis Immigration Law Clinic, and the American Immigration Lawyers Association. What the group tries to do is ensure that communities with immigrant populations throughout the region are made aware of their rights and provided access to legal services. What they're trying to do is address two primary concerns. First, families facing deportation or family members facing deportation and helping address their logistical and legal concerns and issues. Second is addressing the discontinuation of DACA or the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals Program that the federal government is in the process of spinning down and the uncertain situation for those participants with that action occurring. So why is this for you this evening? You asked for this to come back at your September 13 meeting based upon request from the City of Sacramento to consider financial contribution to the program as they did back in May of this year. Their appropriation was for $300,000 towards the program, which would provide services, individualized assistance and services to about 750 families and a series of assistance information sessions on know your rights and family preparedness to 4,000 people and 218 families respectively. So that's the request this evening is to look at what the city's potential participation may be. A little bit of background shortly on what is the DACA program or the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals. It's an immigration policy that's been in place for a couple of years now that allows for certain undocumented immigrants who entered when they were youths, before their 16th birthday and before June of 2007, to receive two-year work permits and exemptions from deportation or certain criteria. It does require regular renewals of those visas and exemptions. I think it's generally a two-year cycle. Based on information that's been posted by the federal government, there are approximately almost 690,000 active DACA recipients nationwide, with almost 30% of those within the state of California. As I mentioned, the federal program is in the process of being spun down to be completed, I think, early this spring. That was announced first part of September. So in looking at this request, staff looked at a couple of analysis points, first on the needs of services. First, we contacted the George Immigration Clinic. Unfortunately, they don't have data available on what the geographic location of people utilizing the services are, so where they live throughout the region. So we then moved on to looking at some census information in terms of city foreign-born population. We looked at that citizen and immigration services data on DACA program recipients. We also looked at demographic data comparing Elk Grove and the city of Sacramento. So in terms of foreign-born population, two tables of interest here. The first one looks at what the city's native versus, native to US versus foreign-born population. Here you can essentially see that about 23% of our population is foreign-born, meaning they were born outside the United States. In the second table, you can see that of those numbers, essentially about almost 10,000 or 10,000 of them are not US citizens, with the rest having been naturalized at some point. This data comes from the 2015 American Community Survey. And what we're not seeing in these numbers and what's not provided in the census data is how many of the non-US citizens or that 10,000 number have valid work visas. We can't differentiate between those two. We can look at some age immigrate, age information for that population. And based on that, there's about less than 2,000 that would be DACA eligible simply by their age and their not-US citizen status. Looking at the census, the Citizenship and Immigration Service data, this was released current as of September 2017. They list the information by statistical metropolitan area. So we look at the Sacramento-Roseville-Arden Arcade area, which they report about 5,900 recipients. If you assume an even distribution of that population around the region, city has about 9% or so of the region's population within our city limits. So that puts it at about 500 participants that could be in here. But again, you're assuming even distribution of that population. If we look at the demographic characteristics of Elk Grove in comparison to city of Sacramento, seeing what the potential need would be from that vantage point, here's some key demographic considerations. This is the key table that was missing out of the staff report, unfortunately. You can see that 9,843 population there in the first line compared to city of Sacramento at 50,000, almost 51,000, and the percentages that break down from there. What you end up seeing is you get down to the educational information, the occupation information. Elk Grove's population of foreign-born individuals generally is more educated and has a employment level at a higher rate in professional industries than service industries, where Sacramento tends to lean more towards the service industry side. So based on this information and looking at these three previous slides, staff's estimation is that there's fewer than 500 DACA recipients within the city of Elk Grove. Next, we move on to the level of funding appropriation. And the staff reporter presented three options for your consideration. First, we look at all persons not a US citizen in Elk Grove. We look at possible DACA recipients residing, residing within the city. And then we look at an option that funds specific workshops and legal assistance for people within Elk Grove. So in that first option, we take the city of Sacramento appropriation of $300,000 across the almost 51,000 persons that are not a US citizen for the census data for city of Sacramento to get to a per-person funding of about almost $6, $591. If we then apply that to our similar metric of not a US citizen of about 9,800, we get to about $58,000 or so. Under the second option, looking at DACA recipients within Elk Grove, we basically take that approximately 500 potential recipients and the $591 per individual to get to about $3,000 of a contribution. This would limit the funding to the children and young adults that are affected by DACA exclusively. So it'd simply be the legal component to that. And under the third option, we would combine the last one with specific workshops, eight in total, that look at the family preparedness assistance and know your rights presentations for a total contribution of approximately $10,000. So considerations for council, is this something you would like to participate in in providing funding to the Fuel Network for benefit of Elk Grove residents? And if so, at what financial level? Include staff's presentation. We're happy to answer questions.
Questions? Vice Mayor?
Have you, have you had any conversations with the nonprofit relative to Elk Grove?
I have not specifically, no.
I'm just curious how many people have been reaching out to them so far, if any?
We're not aware of any. We certainly haven't received any phone calls here at the city looking for assistance.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No questions? No?
Right.
No questions? Yeah. Okay. This one, want to open for public comment. I see that there is one speaker signed up to speak, Mr. Amar Shigil, coming up.
So on this item, I thank the staff for their analysis. What I think we should do is an all of the above approach where we assign $10,000 to $20,000 for specific Elk Grove items outreach classes and additional $20,000 to $40,000 to give to the Immigration Clinic. But ask them as part of that contribution that they start recording how many people are coming from Elk Grove so we know going forward if that's an appropriate expense. That said, I think we are all unnecessarily handcuffing ourselves by not including Councilmember Nguyen in this conversation. She's the subject matter expert. I think we can include her with the understanding that she is not going to have any involvement in the decision-making process, but to ask her what her recommendations would be as an Elk Grove citizen as opposed to a council member. There's nobody in the room which has, who can provide better advice than her.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Hobson on that.
She actually does have conflict of interest. She's the Executive Director of Asian Resources. They are a potential recipient of these funds under the Political Reform Act. She's required to recuse herself and leave the room despite her expertise. She does have a potential conflict and have advised her of that. She's accepted my advice.
And so even if she were to provide testimony from the podium and not participate in the vote on the dais, that could still be construed as influencing her?
It could be. There is a technical exception to the Political Reform Act where individuals can come and speak as members of the public. The problem with it is one of slicing the perception issue, whether or not you're speaking as a member of the public and a member or a member of the city council, because it's really hard to divorce yourself from those two roles. So my general advice has been try not to mix those too much because it's too easy to spill over into when you're speaking as a citizen. We all know that Councilmember Nguyen is a council member and so it can influence the decision improperly under the Political Reform Act. And my general advice is to not put council members in that sort of precarious situation.
Okay. Councilman Soon?
Is there more speakers?
Of course.
No, there are no more speakers. So let's go ahead and close the public comment.
I have a question. Christopher, is to Mr. Shigil's comment is if we, if we give funds, that goes to the Fuel Network. We can't determine, or can we direct how much goes to DACA and how much goes to supporting immigration?
Well, as you see in the third option, we've got it broken down with a certain set of money towards, or certain allocation towards those workshops and then a separate allocation towards the assistance. There'd be DACA recipients specific. So I think we could set it up that way. I think the more components that you add to this and certainly the tracking, it starts to function more like a grant program as opposed to simply just an allocation and cash available to the program. Those would be considerations on how you'd like to see the funds managed.
Yeah, okay. So the, so we just, we could say if we wanted to do X amount of money for workshops and then X money for DACA, and that's about, that's about as complex we'd want to get without making it a grant program?
Counsel's preference, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember, yeah.
So I'll start in. I mean, I was one of the people that asked to have this brought back. And at the time when everything's happening, we, we didn't know, have any idea at that time, but all we knew was potentially we had citizens that could be affected by this and basically young, productive workers that could be taken out of the workforce. And so I think staff did a great job of getting as much data as they could to try to give us the best possible estimate. I know with, with this segment of the population, it might be difficult to track sometimes. So I, you know, without, without having any other data or logic to go by, when you look at how you break down city of Sacramento's, you know, into their formula of $5,091 cents per, per person, I realize that, you know, that's kind of a simplistic way. I, I'd like to do a little bit more than 10,000. And so with that, I'm, you know, with no, nothing to go off of but this, I would, I would propose a word of magnitude of 20,000 that we would contribute as, to demonstrate our, being a regional partner and to, again, help potentially Elk Grove residents that could be affected by this. Get your thoughts on that, council.
So I guess I would question where you pull that number from. And you kind of admit that there is no basis to pull it from because the tables that staff has shown us, including the one that was omitted from the staff report. the one that was omitted from the staff report, but if you look at the table five and table six specifically, you know, the pro-rata share of just under 3,000 for the DACA, possible DACA recipients, and then if we add it in the workshops, it comes to just less than 10,000. So how do you justify doubling that 10,000 amount?
Atmospheric calculation. Right. Well, from what I understand, the 300,000 is arbitrary anyway, so you're starting from...
But as goes Sacramento, doesn't have to go Elk Grove.
I totally understand. I'm only going Elk Grove. And so all I'm saying is if we have, you know, potentially, we don't even know, if we have potentially 500 individuals that could be affected, affected, you know, it's, it's arbitrary. I, I admit that. Therefore, I'm just putting it out for, for conversation because I just, you know, $5.91 per person, I, I don't, I don't see that there's any, that, that isn't exactly something we can hang our hat on either, so that's why.
Sure. So is there any way to kind of get at what you and Mr. Shergill were suggesting of drilling down to more of a substantive survey? Do we have any idea what that cost might be? A survey of how many Elk Grove residents could potentially be affected? So we know whether it's 200, 500, 3,000?
I think by the time you do a quality survey, we could probably hit the dollar amount that Councilman Sue was asking about.
Well, I guess, here's, whatever the council decides as far as the amount they want to commit to this, it's all sort of based arbitrarily anyway because we don't know. But I guess where I'm a little confused is it seems like we're spending the money before there's necessarily the threat. And so, you know, there was, I believe it was a six-month reprieve that the president basically laid the gauntlet to Congress to, to enact something to supersede DACA. And so we're spend, we're throwing money at a quote-unquote "problem" that doesn't exist yet. There is no threat of deportation until or unless that reprieve runs out. Is that right? I think I have that.
That is, that's what I understand, too. And that's a good point. You know, we, we could be, you know, we could be proactive and maybe we, in terms of if folks are wanting to find, I, I'm not in this situation, so I'm only trying to anticipate what someone, one of our residents in this situation might be. If they know that the six-month clock is ticking, I don't know that they want to wait to see what Congress is going to do either. And so do we want to put them on, you know, just kind of on standby? They might want to get advice now. And so if, I feel like if we, you know, if we're going to do something, whether it's now or six months, I don't think there's, you know, in terms of our timeline, six months is not, it's almost immediate. So the other thing is, to your point, Councilman Hume, maybe, and I'm going to, I'm directing my question maybe at Laura or John, is there, is there, you know, an expiration date or something? I mean, if we allocate funds as a, in a, in a budgetary manner, but if no one comes forward, can we ask to have the funds back or, you know, I don't know.
I mean, whatever you decide, we would have to work with the City of Sacramento and the Fuel Network to figure out what contractually we would need to have. I just, I, you know, the, the way, it sounds like the way that you might want to write this would be, you know, basically, we pay for a fee for service as opposed to provide the money upfront. And that would, I mean, I'm just not sure that we could claw money back.
I don't know that you would be able to claw money back. Once you've spent the money, you've spent the money. It's going to be hard to bring that back. I think what you're suggesting, Councilmember Sue, is budgeting, call it $20,000, to use a number that you're talking about. You could certainly put that in the budget anytime you want to, but budgeted funds are not spent funds. That's just a line in the budget.
Yeah.
So my suggestion would be if you want to spend the money on this, this activity, to identify what level of money you're comfortable with and authorize staff to go ahead and spend that money. Once you've spent the money, you're not going to be able to get it back, whether it's the Fuel Network or Sacramento or whoever else you're allocating that money to.
No, I understand that what I'm hearing Councilman Hume say is though that we don't, we don't know if, if we need that much money. And so if, if, you know, maybe for us, we could budget 20,000, but actually commit 10. And if they run out of that, if they burn through that, that 10, then we can, we know we have another 10.
You could do that if you want to. I mean, you could always budget that money anytime you want to. You budget 10, you budget 20, budget 50, budget whatever you want, but that's not money spent.
I understand.
I think the one, the thing that you're struggling with, and as I understand Councilmember Hume is struggling with as well, is we don't really have great data on this. And the data is hard to come by, given the nature of what we're dealing with here. You have a certain amount of, for lack of a better term, distrust to the government of disclosing this information. So what your staff did is the best they could with the information and data they have available through census data and others, and came up with an estimate of what we think but don't know the potential recipients for this type of service might be. We don't know if that's exact. I don't think doing a study is going to be a cost-effective way to find out if that's exact. You'd probably spend more than it's worth. And so I think really the fundamental policy question for the city that you're grappling with is, is this an activity that you're interested in funding? And then it's just a matter of deciding, and you're not going to be scientifically accurate to a degree that's going to make probably a lot of people terribly comfortable. It's an appropriate use of the public funds because it would help out residents within the city of Elk Grove. That's not an issue. But I don't know that we're ever going to be able to get to a level of precision that you might like to have or I might like to have.
Has there been any public outreach from the county or the city of Sacramento or anybody else relative to this yet?
Not that I'm aware.
So if I understand this right, the first two items, the family preparedness assistance and know your rights presentation, that would be something that the city of Elk Grove would host here in Elk Grove?
We would ask the Fuel Network to conduct those workshops here.
So what, what about if we did, we approved the first two and then bring back with what the outcome from that is from the community to how much we're, we want to donate for legal services? I mean, if nobody comes forward that feels that they need it, then there's no point to fund that mechanism. But if we see there's a big, maybe we want to do 30,000 if we see there's a big need.
Do we know the cost of putting on those workshops?
Yeah, that's in the attachment here.
It's in the last table.
Seven thousand dollars for the two of them.
Yeah. And then our risk there is that as many workshops we put on, the public doesn't hear about it or doesn't know about, I mean, that's the risk, is all I'm saying. So, but it's something, it's something to start with.
Right, that's, that's where we have to reach out to them.
We would have to work with the schools because frankly, I think that would, that's our best conduit is through the school system. Because they, they may have, you know, young adults in the high schools and maybe in the community colleges.
Also, I think with all the nonprofits, because, you know, a lot of the nonprofits touch folks that are, that are underprivileged that may fall into some of these categories.
I mean, in terms of economic impact, we have the greatest risk, right? A lot of these folks are, the projections are, we've got, most of our folks are with bachelor's or graduate or professional degrees. So in terms of, you know, impact to our local economy, I mean, there's, there is a...
The reason why that data was important to include was because part of the Sacramento's, City of Sacramento's justification for putting the, the $300,000 into this program is because they, they saw this as a threat to the workforce because they had, they have a number of, quite a bit of this population in the service and construction sectors, and they would be the ones that would be adversely impacted through immigration policies and would then hurt the city of Sacramento's economic development. And so the differentiation here is that our population isn't as dependent upon the sec, of the, isn't as dependent upon the service and construction sectors as the city of Sacramento. The other thing to bear in mind is that while, you know, we, you know, there is a fair bit of immigration activity going on, not in, in other immigrant populations. And part of the worry with the, that drove the City of Sacramento's program is, you know, all of the, all of the different immigrant populations. My, I'm recalling a Sacramento Bee article of a few days ago about refugees from, from another Asian country that were, that were detained by immigration officials.
Yeah.
So, you know, we have a number of immigrant populations that we're dealing with here. So it, it's a very complex issue with, with a lot of different groups, you know, that, that the city of Sacramento is trying to look out for and by extension, we're talking about.
Yeah. You know, I'm just thinking, we, if, if you're willing, we can go with, with 10. And if we need to do more, there's more, you know, we find out more.
Basically, do you use staff's recommendation on table six?
Yeah.
With the 7,007 for public outreach and 3,000 roughly for reserve for legal services if needed?
Yeah.
And if we need more, we'll come back?
Right. If we find out there's more need out there, we can always revisit.
Got a motion?
Yeah. I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Good. All right. Got a motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Extension, pose. Okay. Good. Next item.
Take us on to item 10.2, which is implementation of services using state homeless funding appropriation of $5 million.
I'm Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. I'm very excited to be here tonight to talk to you about the options that we have for funding new programs with a $5 million appropriation that we got from, as a part of the state budget this year. So tonight, we'll be talking a little bit about the basics of homelessness in a regional context and some common misconceptions about homelessness. We are very fortunate to have Sac State Professor Arturo Biaki here to provide some of the academic research on this topic in the region. And then I will be talking a little bit about the specifics of our homeless population, our current efforts that we're putting into homelessness, and some of the opportunities that we have to expand housing and services. And just by way of providing a little bit of background, when we are talking about homelessness tonight, we'll be primarily talking about those who are literally homeless. So people who are living in a place not meant for human habitation, including a car or a tent. A subset of that that's often talked about is the chronically homeless. Those are people who are literally homeless and disabled and who have been homeless for at least one year or at least four times in three years. And some, some definitions of homelessness, the school district definition in particularly, in particular includes those folks who are at risk of homelessness by being unstably housed, maybe staying with a relative or friend temporarily, couch surfing, staying. So I will turn this presentation over to Arturo Biaki for a few slides so he can share his, his knowledge on the topic.
Good evening.
Welcome, welcome.
Oh, thank you. I'm happy to present a little bit of the research I've done on homelessness here in Sacramento as well as kind of public perceptions of homelessness. This past January, I was the principal investigator for the 2017 Point in Time Count, collaborated with Sacramento Steps Forward to basically do a census count of all individuals who are experiencing homelessness within a 24-hour period. We found, or we reported that on January 2017, approximately 3,600 people were experiencing homelessness in the county on a single night. Obviously, this is on a single night, not a total yearly count of people who experience homelessness, and that number would be much larger, probably around 9,000 or 10,000 people experiencing homelessness in the county in a year. One of the startling things that we found this year is that a large percentage of individuals we found outside, around 56% of individuals that we counted were sleeping outside and not in a shelter, which is a pretty drastic change from previous years. That number was around 20%. So that's more than doubled since the last count. I ran some of the numbers for Elk Grove, and these are just estimates, but we estimate that about 73 individuals experienced homelessness on any given night here in Elk Grove. Even though that's kind of a smaller rate than the rest of the county, we actually find that the proportion of people who were in shelters versus sleeping outside is actually pretty similar to the rest of the county. So we estimate that about 40 people are sleeping outside on any given night and about 33 to 34 are in a shelter. One of the kind of startling things that we noted in our report is that there's been a pretty dramatic rise in total homelessness overall in the county. We estimate it's about a 38% increase in the last two years alone. This has generated some spirited discussions about homelessness in the county and the city of Sacramento. And these are startling numbers, but I will say that this is actually pretty consistent with what many communities across California are reporting. And so tonight, I'm going to give you some facts and figures about homelessness in California more generally, as well as about the drivers of homelessness. So I'm going to make three general points. Whenever I teach, I try to say, okay, these are the three things you have to remember. So the first point that I'm going to try to make is that California has the largest homeless population in the U.S., and the evidence is that this number is growing and growing pretty dramatically. Second point is that there is no single answer about why that's growing. It's a complex problem. But researchers are growing to consensus that housing prices, particularly here in California, is likely the key driver of what we're seeing across the state, but also across the country. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about this magnet myth that we see quite often raised across communities because this isn't the only community that's facing this issue. And when we ever see a rise in homelessness, there's often a discussion about whether if we provide more services, if that's going to attract more homeless people to come into the area. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the research in that area. So just some more background numbers. HUD estimates that around 120,000 people in California experience homelessness every night. This is the largest number in the U.S., and it comprises about 25% of all homeless people in the U.S. We have also the largest group of people who are sleeping outdoors on any given night. And, you know, just to kind of give an idea of that, half of all the people who are experiencing homelessness tonight in the United States will be here in California. And we have the largest percentage of chronically homeless. It's around 25%. Most states, it's around 15 or 20%. There had been good news that homelessness was decreasing across the country, and we were seeing declining rates between 2007 and 2015. But HUD hasn't released the numbers for 2017 yet. And so my team and I have been looking across the state and seeing what different communities have reported. And we believe that HUD will eventually report a pretty dramatic increase of about 15% across the state, about 20,000 more people experiencing homelessness every night than they were two years ago. Unfortunately, that's going to erase the, the progress that the state had been making the last 10 years. So that 15% is going to pretty much bring us back to the 2007 levels. So I get asked a lot, what is driving this? Homelessness is a complex issue. There's both individual and community-level factors. The research, though, kind of suggests that there's no single answer and that pathways to homelessness are diverse and complex. So different factors affect people differently. And not going to belabor this point, but homelessness affects a pretty broad spectrum of Californians. And so there's no single profile of a person who can become homeless. A lot of people are vulnerable to becoming homelessness. So researchers generally now talk less about an individual attribute, but more of a situation in trying to figure out what predicts those situations to occur more often. So of course, we have individual risk factors like living in poverty, your health, your disability. But researchers are more and more often pointing to community risk factors, things in communities that we see across communities that seem to predict homelessness. And again, the, I think what's remarkable is that the last four or five years, researchers have continually pointed that housing market factors are the strongest and most consistent predictors of homelessness. They can explain... They can explain about 40 to 60% of the homeless rates across community. One of the measures that people use to predict this is the number or the percentage of residents that are burden renters, that spend more than 30% of their income on rent. And that seems to be a very strong indicator of homelessness, whether we're talking about individuals or families or veterans or rural or urban. That seems to be a consistent overall factor. Another issue, I think, is that when I talk about this affordable housing issue, a lot of people get stuck on the fact that when we think of homelessness, we do think about chronic homelessness. This is a group that we're paying more and more attention to. These are the group of people who have been homeless for over two years or have had four more episodes within a year. And at the federal level, this has been kind of the initiative to address chronic homelessness. And this is really important because these are the people who have severe needs. But I think it's sometimes we, there's a myopic focus that we miss the fact that the majority of people that are experiencing homelessness tonight are people who are really straddling going from housing security to homelessness. And they actually comprise about 80% of the people who are experiencing homelessness. And so, this is the more episodic homeless group. Many of them will self-resolve, they'll figure out a way to not be homeless tonight or tomorrow night. But they will often be sharing housing or sleeping with friends or doing something to keep them out. And I say this is myopic because today's chronic homeless was really yesterday's episodic homelessness. And so, I think we have kind of an upstream issue where we're not combating the affordable housing issue. Finally, I want to talk about the magnet myth because from my perspective, I think we're going to be seeing rising homeless rates, not declining homeless rates anytime soon. So, I wish I had better news to report, but I think the evidence is pretty clear. And so, I think it's timely to talk about this magnet myth. It's something that we see reported a lot, communities concerned about this. But the research on this has suggested that many times, this is much more of a stigma associated with homelessness than actual evidence that people are migrating to communities because of services. And so, various studies highlight that around 2/3 to 3/4 of people experiencing homelessness are homeless in the community where they grew up. Homeless people tend to be less mobile than people who are not homeless. It takes resources to move. But we have this perception or this conflation that homeless are transients, right? That they're going from community to community using our resources. LA County did an interesting study a couple of years back, and they looked at the percentage of people who had arrived in the county less than a year ago who were homeless. And they found that that rate was around 7%, which is actually lower than the percentage of people who are housed, who had moved to LA in the past year. And so, there's some evidence that people, especially in the West Coast, that people who are living in homes are more mobile than people who are homeless. San Diego did a similar study, and they found that 70% of their homeless are from San Diego as opposed to from somewhere else. We did a little study ourselves at Sac State that looked at this issue at the Greyhound bus station about two years ago. And our findings pretty much are consistent with this, that most people that we encountered were not coming to Sacramento because they had heard that there were services or this is a good place, but were coming in part because they just ran out of resources when they were traveling somewhere else. They're usually going to Portland or they're going to San Francisco or LA, but they ran out of resources. So, my conclusions, three conclusions that I have is that many communities in the West Coast are facing this homeless crisis. And while this is kind of an important localized and community issue, it's one that's affected by statewide trends. And again, it's affordable housing. But I think while individual programs and communities are stepping up to the challenge of confronting chronic homelessness, the sheer number of new people experiencing homelessness is likely to exceed the capacity. And I think that actually perpetuates this magnet myth because we see these new programs coming, but we still see homeless people. So, obviously, the programs aren't working. Well, that's because most programs are working with people who have been homeless for a long time. And they're not really addressing necessarily the people who become homeless. So, I think programs that do, that try to prevent homeless or try to get people rehoused as quickly as possible is really critical because we know that homelessness is also traumatic, can be a traumatic experience, right? The longer that you're unhoused, the more likely you're going to experience traumatic events. So, again, my last point is that there's considerable evidence that affordable housing could reduce the number of new homeless. And so, I think an upstream solution could help for many of these things. But we also need more immediate programs like navigator programs and outreach programs. All right. Well, that's my 10-minute lecture on this. Thank you.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, we've got a primer from Professor Byaki on homelessness throughout California and some locally. And now, I will get really local and talk about our population here in Elk Grove. So, in the last two months, the police department estimated that they've had interactions with about 65 homeless individuals, most of whom were sleeping outdoors. And they found that amongst that population, mental health and substance abuse issues were quite common. Sort of slightly differently, our homeless navigator, which we've had on board for a few months now and approved earlier, the council approved earlier this year, he has worked with 36 households in the last two months. And most of those folks were sleeping in cars. There's not, at present, there's not a huge amount of overlap between the two populations that police interacts with and the navigator interacts with. But we are hoping to kind of bring that more together. And for the homeless navigator, most of the folks who are sleeping in their cars have one or more sources of income. And so, those tend to be perhaps the more episodic homeless. Whereas what the police department sees tends to be a little bit more of the chronic homeless. But both populations, for both populations, most were Elk Grove residents prior to becoming homeless. And what we've heard is that they, from them, is that they want to stay here in Elk Grove because they have some kind of a support network here. They have a friend or a family member who will sometimes let them take a shower, give them a meal, even if they won't let them sleep at the house, and they feel safe here. So, in the past six years primarily, we've done a lot here in this city to provide a range of housing services for homeless. Starting with kind of the continuum starts with housing counseling, which is focused primarily on those who are at risk of becoming homeless, facing eviction. And we try to help them figure out how they can stop the eviction or how they can find new housing that meets their needs quickly so that they do not enter into homelessness. We also have our navigation services. We have a homeless navigator who goes out and does outreach to the homeless population, helping them to secure the documents that they need, ID and so forth, that they need to qualify for housing and help them to search for housing as well. We have our winter sanctuary, which is run by our nonprofit partner, which is 14 weeks of winter shelter that rotates amongst the churches in Elk Grove. Up to 20 people per night can benefit from that. And then, we have our transitional housing, two transitional houses, one for primarily singles and one for families. And then, recently, we got into permanent shared housing, which allows folks who are exiting homelessness to have a permanent place to stay for roughly $400 to $500 a month in rent. We also have, through a grant from the state, rapid rehousing assistance, which provides a short-term subsidy to those households that can get back on track with a little deposit assistance and a short-term rental subsidy. So, I have some numbers over here. So, in the last two years, we've seen 407 people go through our housing counseling. 114 unique individuals have stayed at our winter sanctuary. We have had 55 folks go through our transitional housing. About 2/3 of those have left for permanent housing. And about 1/3 of that population has gone on to permanent housing with no further subsidy from anyone. So, they're fully self-paid. And then, the rapid rehousing program, which is newer in the region, has served 10 households. So, our new opportunity to discuss today is the Budget Act appropriation of $5 million. Assemblyman Cooper was instrumental in securing these funds for the city of Elk Grove. He was on the council at the time we did our first transitional house and thought of us and the successes that we'd had. And so, he included that in the Budget Act. It is specifically targeted to navigation centers. And we worked with the state Housing and Community Development Department, which is tasked with distributing these funds to kind of clarify what exactly that means. And they have indicated that navigating people to housing and then helping to navigate them on to permanent housing is an acceptable use of the funds. So, our strategy focuses on that. The funds really provide an opportunity for us to build on the successes that we've already had with our transitional housing and our winter sanctuary. But they also provide an opportunity for us to try some innovative approaches that could be replicated by other jurisdictions. We're a suburban jurisdiction. Our homeless population looks different than Sacramento's. But it might look very much like some other suburban jurisdictions. And so, we have an opportunity to try some things and see what works. So, we have three recommended strategies for you tonight, the first one being a navigation team. We have some portion of this already. We have a homeless navigator who does outreach, intake of homeless people, and connection to housing and resources. And right now, we have a part-time, problem-oriented policing or POP officer who primarily reacts to complaints. We would like to make that into a full-time POP officer position that could be more proactive in reaching out to the homeless population and encouraging them to work with the navigator and also with a mental health clinician that we're proposing, similar to, or maybe in coordination with a program that Sacramento County provides called the Mobile Crisis Support Team, which both Folsom and Citrus Heights are using. There would be a mental health clinician that would provide support on the streets. That mental health clinician can actually write prescriptions, provide some diagnosis, and provide counseling to people where they are so that they don't have to make an appointment and get transported to somewhere and then try and go fill their prescriptions somewhere else. So, we think that that team would really help us to work with the homeless population here in Elk Grove. And so, the second prong of the strategy is to have some navigation hubs. These would be similar to our transitional housing but with quicker move-in and quicker exit. At the homes, which would be homes with private bedrooms and shared kitchen and restroom facilities, consistent with the state budget appropriation direction, there would be a house leader that lives onsite there to make sure that the tenants are following the rules, not creating any issues in the neighborhood. And we would be providing case management and housing search assistance onsite there, aimed at getting people into permanent housing as quickly as possible. So, we do have to, to satisfy the intent of the appropriation, we do need to include some sort of navigation hub aspect in our proposal. And so, then, the final strategy is to help people to move out of the navigation hub and on to permanent and stable housing. And so, to that end, we'd like to expand our stock of permanent shared housing, in which a housing leader lives onsite and folks can rent bedrooms for about $400 to $500 a month. And we'd also like to offer an exit assistance program. And this is one of the areas that is a real opportunity for innovation. There are many ways we could set this up, and we could choose several of these options. But some ideas that were brought up by community members as we looked at what we could do with this were limited-term subsidies, so a voucher for folks who were moving, landlord incentives, maybe an eviction prevention fund or, you know, paying double or triple deposit for landlords who are willing to rent to homeless clients who may not have the best track record with housing or credit. And another option that came up was a family reunification program, so trying to help people to reconnect with their family members here in Elk Grove and get them to a point where they can live again with their family members. So, there are a lot of opportunities for partnership. Actually, throughout all of these options, there are opportunities for partnership with the city of Sacramento, with the county of Sacramento, with the nonprofits that we have that are our partners, Elk Grove Heart and Sacramento Self-Help Housing. And so, I have some budget information here. Ultimately, what we've tried to do is lay out a strategy that gets us through the next seven to 10 years. So, some of the costs, for example, the property acquisition costs are one-time expenses. But most of the other costs, we've tried to spread out over time so that we could give our programs a chance to see what is successful, to make changes to them where we need to make changes, and to give us a chance to track the success of each of the programs. So, some of the benefits that we see to the recommended strategies, the first one and maybe the most important one is it meets the intent of the state appropriation. We also feel that it rightsizes the response. We do not have the same homeless issues that some of the other jurisdictions in Sacramento County have. And so, we're trying to find the solution that meets our needs but doesn't go beyond that and attempt to solve a larger regional problem on our own. It also, and this is one of the themes that, as I looked at many different programs that many different jurisdictions have instituted, this was a common theme, is that it built on a small, local effort, which grew and grew with community involvement and with nonprofit partnerships. And so, our strategy builds on what our heart groups have done and what our other nonprofit partners have collaborated with us on. As I mentioned, we've tried to spread the funding so we can find our success, we can see what works over time, and we can track what works so that we know what actually results in successes in moving people into permanent housing. And the strategy lays out a basic plan, but it allows a good amount of flexibility so that we can partner with other agencies. You may be aware that the city of Sacramento has allocated a significant amount of money for their whole-person care effort. The county of Sacramento yesterday allocated $44 million of Mental Health Services Act funding. There are some very logical partnerships there and some services that should be available to our residents. So, what we're doing here is focusing on the housing piece, which is actually one of the hardest pieces to address in the homelessness arena. And then, we will be looking to partner for some of the service aspects such as health issues, job training, and other nonprofit services that can be provided. So, those are, so that concludes my presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Sarah. You know, one, the POP officer that's mentioned on there, is that a new POP officer? Or is that just something that they would be shifting over some police services allocated specifically to homeless?
So, we currently have a POP officer that's devoted about halftime to homeless issues. We would be looking to make that a full-time position. I can let the chief speak to how that might work in the budget.
I think initially, what we're trying to capture is the remainder of that 50%. And actually, I like to point her out, she's in the back, Officer Jen McHugh. She's not happy that I'm doing this right now. But I'm sure you're all somewhat familiar with Officer McHugh, but she works very hard in the community in this area. So, I think initially, what we're trying to do is capture that additional 50% of the funding. My expectation is that we're going to do some workload analysis and perhaps come back to the council at mid-year to make potentially a position request to, you know, to capture that work, the remainder of Officer McHugh's 50% that we'll need to capture somehow.
Okay. And then, my other question was, you mentioned reuniting with family. And you mentioned that the high percentage is from Elk Grove. Have they also looked at trying to reunite them with their friends? Because a lot of time, there's humility that takes place. And so, they become more reclusive and stay away from anybody they know. It may be still comfortable being here, but sometimes, if their friends know, their friends would be willing to help as well. But you don't, you know, if you don't know that your friend's going through tough times. So, I don't know if that's something that would be feasible to add into that program, be family and friends.
Yeah, I think that that's perfectly feasible. I think the intent there, the idea behind that, and we'd still have some work to do to lay out how exactly it would work, but would be to provide both the person who's renting and the homeless person who would be moving in there. person who's renting and the homeless person who would be moving in there with some supports to figure out how to make that relationship work, and perhaps to provide some kind of declining subsidy to the person who's accepting the homeless person, to give them some incentive to kind of make that work over the long term.
Okay. And, and relative to your presentation, and as well as the general from Sac State, you know, really, really good information. And, you know, it's a tough topic, a lot of people try to sometimes bury their head in the sands on, but it's real, and you guys do a phenomenal job. And I think I've told you before, for, you're an angel here for Elk Grove.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll definitely echo that. Sarah, thank you for the, the background information and, and the presentation. When we spoke, we estimated about 150 to 200 homeless that we have here in the city. So let's say we, you know, I personally like what I'm seeing here from the staff report. That doesn't necessarily address future potential homeless populations, and what we heard was affordable housing is a key component of that.
That's absolutely true.
So, you know, as, as one member of the Affordable Housing Committee, I'm, I'm wondering, is, is the, the affordable housing that we're producing, is that, is that meeting the need and there's just not enough? Or do we need to meet a different range?
There's a little bit of both to that. The, the primary problem is that there simply isn't enough affordable housing. You know, when we did our housing element back in 2013, we were told that over the eight-year period until 2021, that we would need to build 3,400 affordable housing units in order to accommodate the needs of our population. So far, we've, we've built or approved less than 200 of that because the funding at a national level and at a state level just simply is not there. So there, there is the, there is an overall dearth of affordable housing, but there's also, there is the income levels. We have very, very little affordable housing, even what we do have, that's in the range that someone who, say, is getting Social Security Disability or SSI, earning about $900 a month, they can afford a rent of about $300 a month. We have, we have probably 20 units in the city that are in that range.
So you started with the number of units, and, and I, if I understood you correctly, you're basing it off the, the Rena numbers, right?
Yes, yes.
So the Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers. So, but is that, that, that's a formulaic projection. Does it necessarily, do we know that, 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 that is real for Elk Grove? I mean, do we have any better, better data to, at this time?
I mean, we, I, one example I could give you is that we have about 9% of our population that actually lives in poverty. The poverty level is very low.
Okay.
So that's, 9% is about, what, 17,000 people?
Yeah. All right. All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sarah, for a great report. I have just a couple of questions for you. The first is, can you explain, and you kind of lay it out in the staff report, but the difference between the navigation hubs and our existing traditional transitional housing? And you said that the, the main difference is a quicker move-in process. Explain that to me, and explain why transitional housing requires a slower move-in process.
So with the transitional housing, the focus there is on finding people who can get to self-sufficiency within a three-to-12-month period. And so there's an interview process. The folks that move into our transitional housing interview with the owner of the housing, which is self-help housing, and they also interview with the Elk Grove Heart, which provides mentoring to them throughout that time. So most of them are focused on, during the time that they're in the house, they're focused on securing any benefits that they might be entitled to, but also on getting back on track in terms of employment. It doesn't, the, with the navigation hubs, the idea would be that there would be a less lengthy interview process, more of a, you know, okay, you're, you're homeless right now, let's get you into a house tonight or this week, and then let's get you out of the house quickly without worrying necessarily about how you're going to be self-sufficient forever when you move out. So one of the things that our transitional housing has done really well is move people out into permanent housing, especially without any further subsidy. Very few folks have exited from our transitional housing to what's called permanent supportive housing, which is available in the region, and it provides really a full wraparound of services. It's the best option for people who have severe mental health issues or severe substance abuse issues. Of those 55 people in the last two years, only one exited to permanent supportive housing. So I would expect to see with the navigation hubs that we would have more people leaving for permanent supportive housing destinations. And, you know, they could transfer over into, we have a new nonprofit that's associated with Heart called Uplift. So for families, they could transfer over to Uplift, but without the promise of staying for 12 months, say.
So if I can distill what you just told me, then, the transitional housing is geared more towards people who we think will have a high degree of probability of success transitioning back to more stable living. And the navigation hubs are geared more towards people who really need to be steered towards programs for help beyond just financial job training, things of this nature.
Yes, that's correct. The transitional housing is mostly people who are exiting without any further subsidy. The navigation hubs, I would expect to see that people would be exiting to more programs that continued some form of subsidy, not directly paid by the city necessarily.
Sure.
But some form of subsidy.
So it's receive, triage, and then direct to the appropriate wraparound service?
Yes.
And, and so that differs from a shelter, where shelters are more just literally get out from the elements with no expectations of anything beyond that night, potentially?
Right, yes. The shelter is, you, you come for the night, you leave in the morning. The navigation hubs would be, you have a place to be during the day, and we're going to work with you during the day to help you find other housing, to help you figure out what you need to do with your, with any issues that you have, but help you address those issues and then help you get out to other housing.
And so there's not an expectation of a 12-month stay. Is there a timeframe of, of, I guess, where they would move out beyond the navigation hub? Is that a week? Is that a month? Is it case by case?
It's very, it's very case by case. For some folks, you know, it's, it's connecting them with family, it's, you know, it's connecting, it's getting them some deposit assistance. For the episodic, episodic homeless, you know, who might have just been sleeping in their car for a week, you know, it may just be getting them in rapid rehousing and letting them find an apartment. For somebody who's been chronically homeless, it may take a few months before a spot opens up in, say, permanent supportive housing. So I think we'd be looking at, at triaging each person with the goal of allowing them to stay there until they physically had somewhere else to go.
So it's not necessarily limited to folks who have overarching issues of, of mental health or, or drug abuse? It's, let's get you off the streets, into a bed with access to facilities, and then determine how best to transition you to your next phase?
Yes.
Okay. And then with the property acquisition for the, well, for both, for the navigation hub as well as the exit assistance, you're allocating $1 million for two homes, so $500,000 per.
Yes.
What would you anticipate the capacity of each home to be?
I would expect that each home would serve probably about six individuals. Six, six to 10 individuals, actually. With families, parents can share, you know, a bedroom with their child, and so you can have more folks in there.
Sure. And so, okay, and then that would be in addition to the property manager who would also occupy space in that room?
Yes.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Sarah, I've got, I have a question for you. I'd like these long-term wraparound type of service to address this issue. You know, and Councilman Sun asked a question about the population, and you had said about 150 to 200. What, what, I, maybe I didn't miss her something. What are some of the things that we're doing to immediately address those individuals?
So we have our navigation services, and so the navigator is proactively doing outreach to folks who he comes across who are homeless. He takes calls from the public, from the Heart Group, from the city, from the police department, and tries to go out and meet with those folks, get them assessed, get them on any waiting lists that they can be on, get them the ID that they need to qualify for housing. Even being homeless, it takes a surprising amount of ID to qualify for any housing program. So we have that immediate service. In the winter, we have our winter sanctuary, which anyone who's homeless can go down to the Elk Grove United Methodist Church, which is the intake facility. And they have a limit of 20 per night, but, but folks can get, get immediate shelter for the night in that.
Have we, have we been at capacity in the past?
The winter shelter has been at, was, especially last year, at, at capacity many nights, especially with the rain that we saw last year.
Is that the only immediate response to winter accommodations, or?
The, yeah, between the winter shelter and the navigator, yeah. The, the transitional housing typically takes a little while to get into at this point in time.
Where I'm going with this is, I'm worried about those that are left out on the coal. Is there a place for them?
So the, the proposal, the navigation hubs would be our attempt to make that process quicker so that somebody could come in, and provided there was a bed at the navigation hub, could be moved in that day or within a couple of days, as opposed to waiting to go through an interview process for the transitional housing.
I see. So I guess I would be comfortable with having a, an immediate plan as well. And I don't know that, what that would look like, you know, additional facilities and additional accommodations for, for those that just need immediate response. But, you know, I like your plan, you know, I mean, I like the long term. It makes sense to me. But the only one additional thing I'd like to see is that, so.
Okay. So a longer, a more year-round emergency shelter is kind of what I'm hearing.
I think what I'm concerned about is, you know, let's, let's assume that all these properties would be acquired, and at max capacity, let's assume 10 per home, so that's about 40, so we still have, you know, roughly the remainder of that, right? So where do they go? Do they remain in the creek, you know, or, or what, right? And even within navigation, a person addressing it, can a person be transported outside of the city of Elk Grove to a different shelter elsewhere? Or what, what sort of measures are we taking?
Yes, that, that does sometimes happen. There are some shelters that are available in the region, and if folks are willing to go to them now, we, we can transport them down to those shelters.
Because, you know, I, I obviously have heard from folks in the community and advocates, and, you know, their, their interest is, will Elk Grove have a shelter?
I think in response to that, we have the winter shelter, but we also have the, the shelters that would be the navigation hubs. But I, I have not, it seems, it seems to be that for a community like ours, having one major shelter is, is, there's no good place to put that, and that can create its own issues. And so by having some smaller shelters or navigation hubs throughout the city, the, the burden isn't on any one neighborhood to have that population.
Yeah. Okay.
Sarah, I have a, I have a question. The homeless that are here now, how many of them do we know are single, are have families, children? Do we have that count, that number? The majority of them are single?
Most of the ones that we see are single, but families, we know that there are a lot of families out there. We have never had a problem filling our family transitional house. Families are less likely to want to be identified as homeless, in part because there's a fear that child protective services will remove their children.
Okay. So then what happens to them when you run into them and you think that they are, or they're just not admitting to it, and they don't want to?
So our, our navigator will work with them. Sometimes the schools, the schools help to facilitate connections to resources or connections to our navigator. You know, we can explain to them, being homeless is not a reason for CPS to remove your child. That, that, that alone is not a reason. So we, you know, we do want to work with families. The intent is for one of the navigation hubs to be more focused on serving families specifically. And then our, our, our focus on families is, has been primarily getting them into rapid rehousing, which, for many families, it's, the family population is a little bit different than what we see with the singles. For a lot of single homeless folks, disability is kind of their, their income source. For a lot of the families, income and employment is, is possible, and sometimes even there when they become homeless. Actually, most of the folks that have been through our family transitional house have had at least one adult employed. They just don't have the savings to move out, or, you know, have, have other issues, childcare issues, credit issues. And so, so we've worked with them to try and resolve those issues and then move them using rapid rehousing.
And I know we talked about the Elk Grove Food Bank earlier today that we're partnering with them, but are they playing a role in this at all? Are we working with them? Is there anything they can do to assist, or is there anything we can do to assist them?
So the, the Elk Grove Food Bank has their Support Works Program, which is a case management program for folks who go to the Elk Grove Food Bank. And they've been very good at collaborating with Sacramento Self-Help Housing and with Heart and with our navigator in terms of making referrals. Due to the demand on their services for a wide, wide range of services, they haven't seen themselves as a rehousing agency and have, have typically looked to, to our other agencies that are more focused on housing to help homeless people secure permanent housing.
Okay. And then I think the last question I had is, do we have, and the city may have this, I don't know, like a resource guidebook where, I mean, we run into individuals that are in need of various amounts of different services and resources that we can give to them? And because it's countywide, there are so many support services that are available for them that we can share with them, or is that even provided to them?
We, we have a very limited resource sheet that really focuses on what's available specifically in Elk Grove. But we could certainly, I know that there are some resource books out there that cover the county more broadly, and we could certainly take a look at one of those and see how we could modify that for, for our purposes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking, even preventing, there are a lot of resources and services that are out there for individuals that serve countywide. So for instance, if there's a family that's about to be homeless because they couldn't pay their utilities and they were behind, there are support services that are available to assist them in that and to pay it so that they can become current and not go homeless.
Yes. Our food bank currently facilitates one of those programs. But that is a good suggestion, and I think, especially as the county and the city ramp up their services, that there's a logical opportunity for partnership there to ensure that everybody knows about the resources that are available.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? No questions? Okay. Thank you. All right. Let's go ahead and open it up for a public comment. And first speaker I have is Ken Bennett.
Good evening, Council. My name is Ken Bennett, and I'm from Sacramento Self-Help Housing. And I've been working on and off with the, with Heart and with the city council, with the city of Elk Grove for a number of years, working on this homeless issues here in Elk Grove. And I want to say that our agency very much supports this plan and thinks it's a great plan. And we love the collaboration. That's a really effective way to have the local Heart Group, the local city, the food bank, and our agency all working together. And I want to say that, to share with you that this has been an inspiration to other suburban cities in the area. The first Heart Group was here in Elk Grove. There are now five Heart Groups in the county. Folsom, Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova, Carmichael, and Elk Grove. And they're all working, they all have winter shelters, patterned after the one here. And they're all working, they all have winter shelters, patterned after the one here in Elk Grove. And they're all beginning to work with their cities and imitating what you people here in Elk Grove have done. Citrus Heights got a navigator, like the one we have here. Elk Grove now has, I mean, Balsam now has one too. And so their, the plan, the progress that they see here in Elk Grove is being used as a pattern elsewhere. And I want to compliment you on that and just say that our agency supports fully this plan. I'm glad to ask, any questions anyone has about that?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your partnership, Ken.
Come on up. Yeah. We should just keep you permanently as a speaker since.
So I wanted to say that I did read the report and I thought Sarah's presentation was excellent. I think that Assemblymember Cooper allocating these funds is pretty exciting. And I don't give him a lot of praise, so I will give him that today. And I am encouraged, and I think housing is a primary issue when it comes to the homeless. I am, I do feel like there's a little bit of a short-sightedness when we are focusing on the homeless here in Elk Grove. Some of our partnerships are with organizations and county organizations that are really impacted. And so the resources that are available to everybody at large aren't necessarily available immediately. I also didn't see any place where it addresses substance abuse issues. It does say mental health, but that is a separate issue, substance abuse issues. And there is quite a bit of rhetoric in the community about homeless people. And a lot of people, you know, don't want to see them. They see a homeless person on the trail and they make comments like, this is the new Sacramento and, you know, what is our city becoming? And so I've, I heard your comments and the questions that you had for Sarah. And I really felt like this council was very compassionate and, you know, has a lot of empathy for the homeless community, which is super encouraging to me. For the greater Sacramento, or excuse me, the greater Elk Grove area at large that may be watching this, I just wanted to put a face to homelessness. I myself was homeless as a child from the ninth to 10th grade. So when I was 13 and 14, I was homeless for nine months. And then for another period of six months, when I was 15, I did live in a shelter for the first nine months. And then we kind of couch-surfed between family and friends. So I am fully aware of the impacts homelessness has on families, specifically on children. I know the risks that are associated with that. I was sexually assaulted in a homeless shelter. And I think that when we put faces to these, you know, crises, homelessness is just a paycheck away for a lot of people in the community. Myself, I've been having affordable housing issues. And I'm still with family because I simply can't afford the rent here in Elk Grove or the greater Sacramento area at large. So I really feel like focusing on programs such as affordable housing and addressing issues to prevent homelessness is really a worthwhile effort in addition to these programs that we're addressing now. So I just wanted to thank the council and hopefully you'll consider that in the future. Thank you.
D'Anessa, yeah, yeah, thank you for sharing. Vice Mayor and I were saying, thank you for sharing. I just wanted to ask you, in your travels, did, what services helped you? And were any of these, those services?
So my family was homeless because of my parents' substance abuse problems. And those unfortunately weren't addressed at the time. Things that helped us as a family, though, were community members. When year for Christmas, when we were homeless, you know, just a nice family bought us a hotel room for two days and gave us money to go shopping for Christmas presents. And I still remember like everything about those two days. And it was a really amazing experience and it taught me the kindness of strangers. And my father had an employer that let us stay in the garage of their workshop for a few weeks. And that was also really nice to be out of the shelter. It was winter and it was really cold there. So, I mean, mostly I didn't get any services. I was really embarrassed about it. I was a teenager. I was a cheerleader in high school and I had to take the bus everywhere. And I didn't want people to know, so I didn't reach out for any services. And my parents were not in a position to reach out for services at the time. So it is nice to have, to know what services are available. I think just making that available to the general public in like a fact sheet or some sort of a pamphlet would be really great. Because, you know, as a child, I took on a lot of responsibility of the adult. And had I known there were great services available, I certainly would have sought them on behalf of my family.
Well, and I heard you say that you were having some affordable housing issues. So you know we're here and Sarah's here tonight too.
I appreciate that, thank you. Actually, Tim, the city clerk gave me Sarah's name and I was going to reach out to her later this week. So I appreciate that.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for sharing. Sarah, just a quick thought, the clinician, do they cover substance abuse?
Yes, they can cover some substance abuse issues. I'm hopeful that some of the, the substance abuse and mental health issues are often closely related. Not always, but often. And so some of the county funding, I think, will hopefully expand treatment options. We are also working with, our heart group has had some initial conversations with some of the health organizations in town. And there may be some opportunities for partnership there for some treatment options.
That's terrific, yeah, thank you. Next speaker.
You know what, Sarah, while we're on the topic, maybe you could just really quickly explain the difference between the county and Elk Grove services and social services relative to who gets the funding for social services? And where we're kind of, we're kind of stuck in the middle because if you could maybe explain that a little bit on the financial side as well as then the social side?
Right, so the majority of the services that are considered social services are available through the county. The county does provide the Cowworks program, which is the welfare programming. And they do have some homeless options for families. They provide food benefits. They provide some health services and mental health services and substance abuse treatment services. As we all know, the services are very limited. And not everyone who needs them is able to get them. And, which is why there's been such a push for expansion on some of the services lately. The city is not a direct social service provider. We do provide grants to some organizations that provide case management, referral, like our navigator. We provide a grant to that. We provide funding to the food bank to run their food programs and also their Support Works program. But, so most of the funding that we provide at the city level is through nonprofits. We do not provide social services directly through the city. But we are very hopeful, very encouraged by the discussions that are happening at the, at a more regional level that we will be able to better partner with and have our residents better make use of the services that are provided at the county level or in coordination with the county.
Do you think, do you think we're getting our fair share of the county services for what we, what should be allocated to us?
Sarah, can I chime in? I can answer that for you because I receive county funding to provide social services program, which is why I'm very aware of the different types of services that are available for low-income, mental health families and individuals. So the county will fund nonprofit organizations that cater to communities that have barriers. And depending on the population that you serve, depending on the location that you're at, the county will provide the funding. And the county will provide funding based off of the number of individuals you can also provide services to. So when you say, are we receiving our fair share of it? That's hard to answer because there are a lot of organizations that are in the city of Sacramento that are funded through the county that have to serve folks in the county. So I am located in the city of Citrus Heights. I am located in Oak Park. I'm also located in South Sacramento. However, my counting, my funding that I receive from the county serves everybody in the county, which includes residents here in Elk Grove as well too. So I do serve a huge portion of low-income families that come from Elk Grove to my South Sacramento office to receive that, that funding or that service or that support.
The only concern I would have, those people that are in those circumstances may not even have the ability to get outside of the city to receive those services. So we're kind of, they're at a disadvantage. And I don't know if there's a way we can bridge that gap or get more services actually stationed here in Elk Grove would be part of what we need.
I think that's definitely something we want to have a regional conversation about, is where the services are located and how we can better have our residents access services. You are correct that one of the things that we hear when we ask residents about what services, what services they'd like to have, we hear often that services might exist, but that transportation can be a barrier for them. So we could look at that from both a transportation aspect, like let's help get people to the services they need. Or we could look at it from a perspective of, let's bring services here or a combination of approaches.
Perfect.
And sometimes there are organizations that are willing to travel to where the communities need are. So like, let's say if our city is able to bring 250 people here to be enrolled in a certain service, Cow Fresh or Cowworks, then an organization that does those applications, I'm sure would be more than willing to come here and pop up the computer and start enrolling all these families. And which is why I felt like we need that resource guidebook to let the residents here know what is available because they certainly knew what's available. And they called the organization and said that there is a transportation issue, that the organization will come to them.
How would we know that? We're not, do we have somebody that's sitting around waiting? Or are we reaching out or what methods are we?
Well, I think some of the efforts of our nonprofits locally in terms of case management and the navigator know what services people are looking for. And they know some of the challenges that people have accessing those services. We have been very fortunate. The Elk Grove United Methodist Church has provided some office space for some of our programs. For example, the rapid rehousing orientations that we have take place here locally in Elk Grove once every three weeks. So we do, we do try to bring services here and we can continue to talk to new organizations about offering services locally.
Okay, any other questions, comments? No, okay.
It's some speakers.
Lynn Wee. After Lynn is Frank Lucia.
Good evening. If you'll bear with me for a moment, I have a bigger picture that I'd like to present to you that I think that could cover many aspects of what we've been trying to work for as a city. So my plan or suggestion would create jobs and bring jobs to Elk Grove. It identifies an area within our current city limits that could be seen as an infill project. And it is another opportunity for us to be a destination city. And it supports one of our implementations of our strategic goals, number four for fiscal years 2017, 2019. I'm suggesting that our city council look to building a community of tiny houses. And I asked Jason to share with you some photos. And so I hope that you have those before you so that you can see that there are a variety of types of tiny homes. And this is not a new concept. I didn't think of it on my, by myself. Several other cities have successfully implemented this land use concept. For instance, Portland, Oregon has Dignity Village. Eugene, Oregon has Opportunity Village, followed by many other cities across the United States. Newfield, New York, Olympia, Washington, Madison, Wisconsin, and Austin, Texas. The potential site for our project, our city has several empty lots for which this project would be suitable. I have one in mind that I believe would be in an excellent area. I believe the property along Sheldon Road, where Walmart was once going to be located, is perfectly situated as it is along public transportation and a future light rail site is proposed west of there. The areas surrounding this site have retail projects which are not fully leased. And I believe this area is saturated with retail, presenting an opportunity for something better. I'm aware the city does not currently own this site. However, I do believe the city is able to negotiate an incentive, as has been done with other projects. Potential participants to build the tiny homes and job creation. You may not be aware that Kasumnus River College has an architectural program located in the Wynn Center. This center was possible through the generous donation of the Wynn family. In October 2016, SMUD held a tiny house competition with teams of students from across our state universities and colleges participating. Our city could collaborate with CRC in bringing the competition within our city limits. We could expand on this program and possibly have graduates from the CRC program along with current students building the Elk Grove Community Project. There's a possibility that we could create some jobs for our high school students which are lacking now. This would give graduates from CRC an opportunity to build and work in our city. Our city could work with SMUD, other nonprofits, and our generous development community to raise the money along with the current grants that are available. Building a community with wraparound resources. Developing a community of tiny homes would allow for our services to be centrally located in the community and can be a wonderful place of affordable, independent living units for our homeless population. One of the tiny property, one of the tiny homes on the property could be the home for the services. And it sounds like then we might be able to get other county services to use that particular tiny home to bring to our community, to help out our residents. The community could have a community garden. There's all sorts of possibilities for our tiny homes in helping our homeless population in another way. I appreciate all of Sarah's efforts and everything that you of the city has done. But I think we can come up with some innovative ideas and some other alternatives for our homeless population and our affordable housing needs here. This is just another type of living arrangement that we could offer that would address several aspects of concern within our city. Thank you.
Next speaker is Frank Lucia. Following Frank is Meg Spear.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have some prepared words here. And I'm very impressed with your knowledge of what's going on with the homeless in this city. And the word compassion has already been used, but I definitely hear that from not only your comments, but your questions. My simple message is the partnerships that we have developed are extremely important. They're in the plan. There are a lot of other partnerships out there that can be developed in the future. The plan that has been developed, I think is a good one, that is certainly supported by Elk Grove Heart. However, I'm hoping that there is some flexibility in the plan as time goes on. This city is growing rapidly. As I drive around town, I notice the Welcome Elk Grove signs. And the bottom of the signs, there is a figure that shows the population. That number never goes down as I, and it seems to change every two to three months as it's updated. And we're over 170,000 right now. It's going to get, and we're going to have more people here soon, which means that we'll have more homeless. So I thank you so much for being a partner. This was not so a while, I'm talking several years ago, where homelessness was not recognized in Elk Grove. It's certainly evident to me that you as a group recognize it as an issue and one that needs to be addressed in the future. So thank you and we look forward to working with you as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Meg Spear. Following Meg is Fred Bremerman. Meg Spear. She left, okay. But Fred.
Good evening, council. I'm Fred Bremerman. This year, I'm the president for Elk Grove Heart. And if you've ever wondered what happened- Heart. And if you've ever wondered what happens to retired CSD workers, you now know. This community has pulled together in many ways over the years to make some very positive things happen. You've been a key player in this. Partnerships, as Frank mentioned, are absolutely critical to the issue of what we do about helping homeless. But we tend to think of homeless as the homeless, as compared to Vanessa, who shared a pretty moving story about her, her issue with homeless. Our organization, Heart, is the one that takes phone calls almost daily from people asking about homeless issues. We've, we've provided that number and said, if you're working through homelessness, call us. Okay? So we get to, we get to hear those stories of what's going on. There's no one-size-fits-all answer in this. It's not, nothing new, but it's important to see this not as a linear equation that says, if we have 500 people, and we have so many homes, we solve the issue. It doesn't work like that. You need to think of this much more like a puzzle. There's resource puzzle pieces, and they have different shapes, and then there's individual people, and they have different shapes. You have to fit them together. And the one thing I've learned in the seven years working with Heart is there's no easy way to fix this puzzle. And it seems to change on a regular basis. Now, what Sarah has put in her staff report is not just something she came up with. She reached out to Sacramento Self-Up Housing, you heard from Ken Bennett. She reached out to Heart, and she said, hey, what are the issues? What's, what's at the forefront? I hear from Jennifer, Jennifer McHugh in the Police Department, but what are you guys hearing? And together, we helped craft the recommendations before you. They're multifaceted. They're a variety of pieces of the puzzle. I think they're very good pieces of the puzzle for where we're at right now. If somebody was to say, here's $100 million buildup, big, huge shelter, I'd say you're crazy. It's not where our community's at right now. Don't try and fix everything with the wrong solution. Go for the right solution. I believe right now, this is the right solution that Sarah's proposing. There's flexibility in it. It provides a mental health component. It provides a housing component. It gives us flexibility to adjust, and it buys us some good time to see what's working, and continue to build on those successes. I hope you'll take that to Heart as you consider how you're going to vote for this. Heart is the ones that do the 12-week shelter each year. This will be our fifth year. A few weeks back, I invited some of you to come out to have a burger with us at our house opening. This winter, over the 84 nights that we do our program, I'm going to be inviting you to come out and share a dinner with some homeless folks that we serve. I'd love to have you sit around. It's amazing what you learn having a dinner with somebody who's working through homelessness. So you'll be getting an invitation from me, and I hope you'll be able to take advantage of it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Fred. Thanks for all that you and your team do.
We have no additional speakers, so let's go ahead and close public comment, and open it for council deliberation and direction.
I, I agree with what Fred just said.
I agree 100%.
I want to make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion second?
Well, I'd, I'd like to have a little discussion on this, if we may.
Okay.
Because there's a couple trains of thought on this. The first is, you know, a hand-up, not a hand-out. Teach a man to fish, right? There's all these parables about, about sort of transitioning people back into, to regular society, or, or at least getting them out of the situation they're in. And then there's also stories like Malcolm Gladwell recounts in his book of, I believe it's called Million Dollar Benny. And, and he talks about that essentially, if you can cure the chronic homelessness issue, those who are, have the greatest societal cost because of the, the resources that they require, you free up enough money to do everything you want to do with the folks that just need a little bit of help. But there's so much is being spent on the very chronic, who have issues that are not simply missed paycheck, or injury, or something happened. It's, it's mental illness. It's substance abuse. It's alcoholism. It's these things that they really, they've got to break that cycle with something greater than just a navigational hub. So there's a couple trains of thought there. But I, I want to go back to what Lynn brought up, because as soon as I saw the email from Jason, I knew exactly where she was going with that. And I think it's a fantastic idea. And I think it has a lot of promise, for several reasons. One, you have not only the CRC Tiny Home Program, that builds tiny homes, you have the Sheldon Building Trades, whatever they call those, or the special academy. You have the Building Trades, Sacramento Building Trades Council, who have apprenticeship programs, and would probably be willing. And so rather than buying two houses at $1 million, I would estimate the wholesale cost to build a tiny home, not what you would buy one if you went out and tried to buy one, but to actually build it from the trailer up, would probably be in the $20,000 to $40,000 range. And so we could get a fleet, quote unquote, of a dozen or so tiny homes. I've got a parcel in mind that already has utilities stubbed to it. You would have the, the property manager in the unit with a controlled access, so they know who's coming on property, whether or not they're supposed to be there. And, and I'm speaking more for the exit assistance housing, not necessarily the folks that are... Because part of it is the dignity of autonomy, of having their own front door to open, their own kitchen to cook in, their own bed to lay their head in. And at the end of this, hopefully, you reach an end to this program, you have a fungible asset that with a little renovation, you turn around and you, you spin it off, and it's sold. You don't have a lot of, it, it's kind of like a BRT versus a light rail. There's not a lot of money spent putting an asset in the ground. It's, it's flexible. So I'm in support of the program, generally, because I think it touches a lot of different areas. And it doesn't just try and wrong-size, throw $1 million at a great big shelter and say, hey, let's put it, everything, everyone right here. But I'd like to, to hold out for a little bit on the, particularly the exit assistance portion of buying properties, to maybe explore if there isn't some other program we can do that's maybe a little far-reaching, maybe a little kooky, but has different promise to it. And this is something that hasn't been tried. Because to Mr. Bennett's point, my father-in-law, God rest his soul, used to say that in a sled race, only the lead dog has a view that changes. And so the fact that Elk Grove has been out in front on some of these things, and has done things differently, I think, let's not give up now. Let's, let's try something different. And I know that this has been done in other jurisdictions, and Sacramento has taken a look at incorporating the tiny house movement into how to solve their homelessness issues more with container pods. But I'd like to explore that. So I, I'm, I like the direction of the funds are going, but I don't necessarily want to...
So one is, is the lot that you're thinking about, the one next to Winko?
That one would work, except I think that that one's being pursued to finally come to fruition. The one I was actually thinking about, and I probably shouldn't, I mean, this is why you have property negotiations in closed session. But it's owned, currently owned by a church. It has utilities stubbed to it. It was going to be, I don't know if it's a, like a medium-density product or what, but it has, I know at least dry utilities, and hot wet utilities as well, stubbed to it already. The idea that you basically, a tiny house, has essentially what equates to RV-style hookups.
Mm-hmm.
So you're not talking about something that's permanent. You know, and if, if we could get 12 of them, 15 of them, 20 of them, and that's the only thing, is the, the whole thing's scalable.
Sarah, the other, the other thing with that, we could probably use some of our affordable housing funds to couple with this, correct?
Yes, to the extent, to the extent that we have affordable housing funds available. We do have an RFP out on the street, and so if there are funds available after that is accounted for, then yes, we could certainly look at budgeting funds for this type of project. What I'm hearing is that the, the direction could be to replace the permanent shared housing acquisition component of the program with an further exploration of whether or not a tiny home community would be possible.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's what I was, I wanted to ask. Is that what you mean, Councilman Hume?
I think that's what I mean.
So the, so basically, the rest of it, I mean, because you have property acquisition, two homes, you know, $1 million, that, that's your, that's part of your exit assistance. So you're saying that, that would be allocate, reallocated towards constructing these tiny lot?
So to, to go back to the discussion on funding the fuel program, we put the $1 million as a placeholder, that we've allocated it for this purpose, and we just explore whether or not there isn't something different than what we've always done.
So, yeah, Councilman Hume took exactly the, as somebody who does service providing, I, and I said that when I met with Sarah and talked about this yesterday, is that we want to give a hand-up, not a hand-out, and that seeing that revolving door does not help us, does not help the individual, and doesn't help the city overall. And I know this to be true, and that is that homelessness, low-income families, it's intergenerational, meaning, you know, my parents were low-income, my kids are going to become low-income, I mean, they're, there's, the cycle has got to be broken somewhere and somehow. And that, I actually went on that Austin study mission, and I paid a lot of attention to that tiny home community, and I thought it was amazing. I thought it was great. And the homes are built to, and the reason why I asked if they were individuals, or if they were a family, is that the homes were built by the individuals themselves, and that they actually had to pay, but they got to own it. So $400 a month will get you this home. $500 a month will get you a little bit bigger. And if you are a family, then you got a mobile home. But the idea behind the individuals contributing to it, and building it, and building this community, it did not look like a homeless shelter in any way. It was a really nice-looking community, and the people valued it, and they really took care of it, because they took some pride and ownership into it. So I, I like that idea. I think you're right that we need to explore it, and see if that's even something we can do. There are costs to pulling things like that together. It seemed like there was a whole community that came together. It was faith-based, supported, so we would make sure that we'd get our entire community involved in this as well, too. Very little found, very little federal funding was involved because of all the restrictions, and it was really just the community coming together. And, and I know our community to be very much involved in wanting to make a difference, and that I think if we did pitch something like this, that I think our entire community would want to come out, and would want to play a role in something like this. But I agree, we need to maybe make it a placeholder, and, and have Sarah and the staff look into it, to see if it's even something we can do.
I'd be, I'd be open to explore that, but something you said earlier, Sarah, was sort of along the lines of not in my neighborhood. And so, let's be realistic here. I don't know which parts you're talking about, but, you know, I, I'd be open to it. Let's explore it. My only concern is these tiny homes, what their capacity are, if they're one per household. And I understand where Councilman Hume's coming from, is that pride of ownership, you know, the pride of this is mine. That has a lot of meaning. But, you know, I, I'd be open to go in that direction, but at the same time, balancing that with whether this is actually more or less in comparison to the acquisition of the, the two homes.
So what I saw in Austin, I would put that in my neighborhood, because it was really nicely done, very nicely done.
But so what I'm, what I'm hearing Councilman Hume say, though, is we basically adopt that what Sarah has here, with the exception of the exit assistance program, which is about a million and a half, and we, we just, Sarah explores this concept and see, you know, what that would look like. Bring that back, that component back. It would take you time to acquire, to find two homes anyway. So during that time, you're, you're...
Grab some options, I suppose, yeah.
Yeah, for that, just for that exit assistance. Is that what you're, you're saying?
Yeah, and I don't even know that I pulled the full million and a half. I think I left the 500,000 with the subsidy landlord, and just looked at the million for the property acquisition.
Okay.
See if we couldn't do something more far-reaching with that.
Yeah, I, then I, I would make, I would amend my motion to reflect that, then.
Yeah, I don't even know if it needs to be amended. It's just kind of a placeholder. So if it needs to be amended, I'll, I'll second that amendment.
Okay. Got a motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention? All right, next item.
Lynn, this is a hallmark night, because I don't see you and Pat Hume agree on very many things.
We agree oftentimes. Usually it's to disagree.
That'll take us to item 10.3, to consider an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Section 10.48, Speed Zones, to establish speed limits on Emerald Oak Drive, Solomon Drive, and Union Parkway.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm Ryan Chapman, with Public Works Department, and I'm here to discuss three potential speed limits. The first location would be Emerald Oak Park. We received a request for some speed control on Emerald Oak Park. While investigating it, we realized that while there was a posted speed limit on the north section of the road, there wasn't anything on the south section. And reviewing the ordinance, the road had never been brought forward for an established speed limit. We're recommending a 25 mile an hour speed limit. The second location is Solomon Drive. In this location, it is predominantly residential. It doesn't meet the requirements for residential streets by a speed limit, but after completing our traffic studies, we are recommending a 25 mile an hour speed limit. The third location is Union Parkway, predominantly industrial at this time. The road was recently refinished in the last two or three years, and we are recommending a 35 mile an hour speed limit. There were a couple typos in the ordinance that was presented to you, that would be addressed prior to the second reading. Staff is recommending that the council introduce and waive the full reading.
Mayor, Councilmembers, let me just address a typo, so we're clear about the record. The ordinance has a typo where it says Emerald Park Drive between, word's misspelled, we just need an E in there. The top of the ordinance, Section 5, we have an extra parentheses in there. Section C, the word 35 should be spelled out before the number 35. I just want to be clear about that, so that when you do a first read, that those corrections will be incorporated into your first read.
Which is outlined in the green sheet.
I didn't see a green sheet on this. Perhaps I missed it.
A green sheet was not prepared.
Can you repeat again the, the misspelled, Emerald Park Drive, or Emerald Oak Drive?
Emerald Park Drive, the middle of the ordinance. It's on page four of your staff report.
Page four.
The word between is just misspelled. Just needs an E in it.
Okay, but shouldn't that also be Emerald Oak Drive, not Emerald Park Drive?
It should.
I'm, I'm not sure. I'll look to the traffic engineer. Is it Emerald Oak?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Emerald Park's in a completely different part of town. Quick question, Ryan. All these meet the 80th percentile threshold criteria?
Yes, the two 25 mile an hour zones were measured at 28 miles an hour, and they were rounded down with the deduction. And Union Park was measured at 37 miles an hour and rounded down.
Great. Thank you.
All right, any questions? Nope, no questions. Thank you, sir. Want to open for public comment? I have one speaker lined up to speak. Randy Becker. All right. All right, want to close public comment. Council deliberation and direction.
First of all, I want to recognize Randy is the best speaker we've had so far tonight, right there, but move staff's recommendation.
You want to read the entire?
To be read.
Has to be read?
Yep.
All right. In that case, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution. A title-only in ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 10.48, Speed Zones, to establish speed limits on Emerald Oak Drive, Solomon Drive, and Union Parkway, with the typo corrections is outlined by the city attorney.
Got a motion? Got a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention? Next item.
Randy, you're a role model for all the speakers.
That'll take us to item 10.4, which is a review of city council ad hoc committees. So this is the annual review. It's prescribed by the norms and procedures manual. Staff identified three standing, oh, sorry, three standing ad hoc, not standing, sorry, three ad hoc committees that are currently active. It's that review. If you wish to terminate any of these, we'd ask you just to take a motion second and a vote on that.
Okay. We have three ad hoc committees. Members, I think we're, we're done with the diversity ad hoc, or? No, no, we're not, huh?
No, we're not.
Nope. No, I, I'm fine with keeping them as-is.
Yep, sounds good.
All right. As-is. Want to open public comment. Seeing that no members have public signed up to speak, want to close public comment. Council deliberation and direction.
Keep as-is.
All right. All right, we're done then. Let's adjourn the meeting at 9:23 PM.